All right, I'd like to call to order the April 14th, 2025 Mountain Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting to order. Would you please take the role?
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Vetcher.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Landes. Oh, for God's sakes, I am so sorry. There, now they have. I apologize. Commissioner Wu?
Present.
And we'll give our attendees just a quick moment, please. Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Landes has not yet signed in.
All right. Did we get Commissioner Stenson?
Oh, Commissioner Stenson?
Present.
I apologize for not seeing you there.
No problem.
All right, next item on the agenda, approval of the March 24th, 2025 meeting minutes. Does anybody have any changes or corrections? I am not hearing or seeing any, so we'll go ahead and declare those accepted as presented. Item number four, public comment. Let the record show that there is no public in person tonight. Do we have anybody who has signed up to do public comment online?
There is no public comment online and none was submitted via email.
All right, so we'll move on to item number five, review of middle housing development code amendments.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So we have quite a few topics to get through. We hit an exciting milestone and our draft code is, it's our draft, but it has been submitted to Commerce as of Friday. So we're excited to walk you through that today. We're also going to be talking about what we heard at the community event at the end of last month. And Becky Hewitt from Echo Northwest will also be joining us and talking us a little bit about middle housing feasibility. Do you want to go to the next slide? Yeah, so our goal today is we want to seek your guidance on the draft standards. This is our opportunity here. And if you go to the next slide. Yeah, so I talked about this a little bit. We'll cover what we heard from you all last time. The community workshop, Becky will talk about the middle housing feasibility, and then Heidi is going to deep dive into the draft district standards and the draft design standards. And then hopefully we have time to talk about the housing action plan. Okay, so what we heard from all of you last time. Echo Northwest talked about the feasibility and we heard from you all that affordability is critical at Mountain Lake Terrace and that you were interested in seeing the housing prices and how it would be relative to household income. We also heard that it was important that in the R3 zone and the R4 zone, that you wanted to see bonus as a percentage. Really trying to understand the desire with existing densities and lot coverage. And Heidi is going to talk about that today with some examples. Echo Northwest is getting ready to do their interviews with developers. That'll happen likely this month. And we heard that you wanted to kind of talk to developers that have experience in other jurisdictions. We also heard from you that you're interested in, you were really excited about the height that was proposed and you even thought that three stories should be applicable to R1. Because open space is quite important to the lots in Mountain Lake Terrace. We also heard about the dadu height, and so instead of controlling dadu height, control the rear yard height differently from the front. Generally, you all supported the initial setbacks, wanting to allow for porches, stairs, retaining walls. We really heard that nuance from you all, and you'll see that kind of reflected in the design standards. Supportive of setback garages from the front, reducing cottage setbacks for lower height. And we also heard from you all that the supporting for control of garage width is important. So even reducing further from 50%, which was what was proposed last time. You were generally in agreement to the parking ratios, which was great. You felt like there was sometimes too much parking and that there's a great opportunity to incentivize green stormwater practices. And you're going to see that tonight, how we're proposing a flexible bonus for stormwater. And we also heard that you're excited about bonusing for alleys. So you're going to hear more about that as well. Proposing bike standards and then generally supporting the diversity of housing types. What we didn't hear, important to note, is the use of FAR versus lot coverage. We did assign homework to the planning commission. We talked about that. But you, so you will not see FAR in our draft standards. But if we're interested in FAR, that can be discussed in our next round. Okay, so the community workshop, if you go to the next slide, yep. So we had a really great turnout. We had people who were living in the neighborhood, developers who came out. You see the image on the left, we had various numbers of boards where people could come and ask questions and ask kind of really specific things about your, the lot and what was going on with middle housing and the housing action plan. We got a lot of great feedback through sticky notes, and we also held a presentation. I know some of you were there in attendance. So some of the key themes that we heard was people are generally super excited about the middle housing code, which was great to hear, the desire for housing variability, affordability, and just in general, having more accessible housing. There was a strong support for increasing housing density, especially in the R3 and R4 zones. And generally, we heard a lot of interest in ADUs. People wanting to learn more about how to build them faster and how to kind of get more on their lot. And I was really excited to hear people are really interested in the design improving for middle housing. Just general increase in walkability in Mountain Lake Terrace, which was great. I, we also heard a general desire, we already mentioned the first one. People want more small apartments and just more diverse housing, more units, maximize the space. And just again, the desire for more ADU regulations for that to happen easier, quicker, more flexibility. So just a little bit more detail on what we heard. There was a lot of support for one parking space per unit. We didn't really hear a lot of disagreement on that. There was a general support of the maximizing for lot coverage for units as well as the bonus for creating alleys. A lot of people were quite excited about that idea. And then Jeff, generally, everybody, everyone was in support for tree retention as a bonus. The concerns that we heard, general dissatisfaction with the way that townhomes have been developed so far in their unit design. Generally skinny units, people weren't excited about that type. There was a general desire for improved design regulations, especially related to townhouse developments, and a general concern over building height and yard privacy as we start to increase middle housing density in Mountain Lake Terrace. And lastly, there was general concern over shared driveways, the utility capacity, whether there would be enough water storm facilities, traffic management.
Got two quick questions. With the comments about the desire to improve the design of the townhomes, did the people at the open house provide any specific examples? Or was it just more of a general comment?
There were a couple of examples, I think, general like aesthetics from the front of the unit. And then the other one was about the layout of the townhouses, whether they're, if you're limited by how skinny the unit is, sometimes you have to divide the kind of the living areas. So that was something that was discussed in detail.
Okay. And then one other question before I forget, going back to the very beginning for the homework. That was a live document, right? We had to log in.
Yes.
As we typed in our comments, it was automatically saved?
Correct.
Okay.
We got your, we did get your responses. Thank you. Thank you for doing that. Yep. Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Becky to talk about housing market context.
Okay, thanks. So my colleague, Mackenzie, spoke to you at your previous meeting on middle housing. And I'm going to kind of pick up where she left off and just add a little bit more detail. And I try to keep it pretty short though, because there's a lot to talk about with the standards. So I'll stay fairly brief. And then if folks have questions, I'm happy to answer them. You can go to the next slide. I'm not sure who's controlling the slides on that end. You can advance to the next one.
We're trying, hold on.
Okay, no worries. There we go. Okay, so this is a little bit of a quick recap of what Mackenzie shared before. Just sort of the comparative market strength of different types of housing in your current market. This is just a sort of general assessment of what builders are likely to be comfortable building, given what's been built in the area before, and where there's sort of a proven market versus little bit more of risk of getting into newer product. So in general, the larger detached homes, there is, there's a clear market for those. The builders kind of know how to do them. The highest price, end of the price range, you might not see a huge amount of demand there, but there is, it's a known quantity, smaller for sale product, either side by side, attached townhomes, duplex types of things, and then also detached smaller units. There is a lot of demand for those, but you get into a little bit kind of tighter pricing of what people are willing to pay for those products. And so those, there's a lot of demand, but sometimes the feasibility isn't quite as strong. We'll show you some additional information about feasibility in just a second. The stocked rentals feasibility is part of the issue there. There's also other things that increase cost. There's challenges with getting financing and investors for stacked rentals. And then per condos, there's just a whole host of issues outside the development code. Construction defect viability is the biggest one. And then in other markets, sometimes we see developers start to, you know, find solutions for those things over time, but they are a real barrier at present. Go to the next slide. And so what we're looking at is really what are the implications of your market for what you might see and what you should think about in your zoning code. And it is kind of setting a hierarchy of if, if the code were to treat everything equally, kind of which housing types would be most likely to win. So large detached units, that's kind of setting that, the competition and that sort of easy thing that developers know how to do. The smaller, smaller detached units and townhouses, those, they can be a more attainable option, but needing to make sure that in order to actually see lower prices on them, we need to make sure we're talking about actually getting to smaller units than you would get otherwise. And then the stacked rentals and condos really might need incentives both in the code and beyond the code to have a chance of competing. So we'll go to the next slide. You'll start to see what this looks like. So these charts, they're using a metric called residual land value. It's not super important to unpack exactly what it is, but it's basically the, the margin between developers' costs excluding land and what the development is worth. And so the bigger the bar, the higher this residual land value, and this is normalized per square foot of land area. The bigger this bar, the more room they have to negotiate with property owners and the more room there might be once, if they are able to acquire a property, they might have a little bit more margin between the bare minimum amount of profit they can make and still have it be viable and, and what could result from the property. So they have some potential upside and more ability to negotiate with property owners if this is a taller bar. So the taller the bar, the more likely they are to be successful in moving forward with development and to actually choose to advance it and be able to secure a property. So this is comparing within basically the same form of development, what is the impact of getting more units and more units on a site? So you can see the dark green townhouses, it makes a pretty big difference to go from four units to six units. Cottage clusters, it also helps to go from six to eight. And with multiplexes, getting from 14 to 18 makes a difference there as well. So across those multiple different forms, we're seeing that density makes a pretty big difference in, in what's feasible and what's most likely to be built. You can go to the next slide. And this is comparing the different types against one another. So when we look across all the different options that we, that we tested, the ones that stood out as the highest residual land value, the highest feasibility are just two detached houses on the lot, basically just splitting the lot. They're both sort of the same as a normal sized detached house now, if that's allowed, to do just two pretty good sized detached houses, that is pretty feasible. And then the other one that's a strong option is to be able to get to six townhouses. And those, those options performed the best. So those are the things where if all these things are allowed and available, those would be the things that developers might show the most interest in building. Next slide. And then smaller rental developments, there are a variety of reasons for this, but they are not as likely to be competitive with for sale housing with the way the market is right now and just some of the financing challenges with, with building small rental product. So those ones which are highlighted in orange, you can see some of them barely even can, are barely even feasible if the land was free. So if they're at zero, that means if you gave somebody the land for free, they could barely make the develop, they could sort of just on the thinnest razor edge of a margin be able to make it work. So fourplexes and sixplexes as rentals, even if the land was free, are really going to struggle to achieve feasibility if they're rental. And even courtyard apartments with a few more units are still likely to get outcompeted by a lot of these other options. Next slide. I think about one more, there we go. And so if you're looking at ways to make rent, rental housing more likely to be competitive with the for sale housing, multiplexes that can fit more units on the lot, that gets kind of up into that range where maybe it's, maybe it's a viable option. Maybe it might not be still the highest, the strongest option overall. But there might be specific sites where it makes sense. There might be some developers who, that's what they know how to build, and so that's what they're going to do. So there's, it at least puts it into the range where it's more likely to be competitive with the other housing types. So overall, what that, and I'm going to pass it back to Heidi in just a second to talk about the draft standards. But all what that's showing us is that if you want to be able to get to some, to the stacked kind of multiplex types, they, they're going to need to get to a pretty high density. And that even, even for things like townhouses, cottage clusters, the more units they can physically fit on the site, the more likely they are to be built and to be, to be a better option financially for a developer than just, you know, doing two houses on, that are more like the existing size, you know, but a detached house that you could do under the rules today. So the more, that density really helps encourage middle housing production and, and helps get to a wider range of housing options that could be built as a result of the middle housing rules. I'm going to pass it over to Heidi unless folks have immediate questions, but I'm happy to take questions when we get to the discussion portion as well, if folks have follow up questions on any of them.
I have a quick question. When it comes to sort of that, that jump from like four townhomes to six townhomes, and you know, the six makes it more feasible and more likely. Given our, the analysis that was done on our lot sizes, is it safe to say that to achieve that six, then there would have to be some property aggregation occurring? Which most likely would then mean that the developer probably wouldn't be doing six units, they'd probably be doing more than six?
And so Heidi can talk a little bit about, about how the draft standards would relate to the different sizes and how we thought about lot coverage and setbacks and things like that. But I would say the short answer is that on an interior lot, fitting six would be pretty, it's possible. Their test fits showed it's possible, but it's tight. And it depends a lot on the setback rules and driveway, what this depends on all those details. On a corner lot, if you can just put the driveway in the back, there's much more potential to get to six units. So I think it depends, being able to get to six depends on the lot size and shape and the specifics of setbacks and things like that that are going to impact how everything lays out on the lot.
Yeah, I can add a little more detail. These test fits were based on a 7,200 square foot lot, so very typical lot size. And some zones won't get up to six, right? So R1 doesn't go that high. So they're, they're stuck at two or four if two, if one is affordable. And then the R2 can get up to six if one is affordable. So, yeah.
Yeah, it's interesting how this sort of plays into with maybe some of the comments that we heard at the, the open house too, about, you know, the concern about the design aesthetics. And we're talking about six being a real tight fit, that is probably going to be designed consideration as well. The public, I'm sure, would have issue with.
Yeah, it's going to look pretty typical to what you're seeing already. We'll, we'll kind of get there. You've probably had a preview if you've looked at your packet.
Gotcha. And then just making sure, anybody else have any other questions?
I have questions, but I'm going to hold them to the question period.
Okay.
I have a question. I just want to make sure I'm interpreting this, this graph right. So on slide 16, with the analysis findings, smaller rental developments. So with the residual land value per square foot at $80 for two detached houses and $84 for six townhouses, is this saying that for the developer, more or less, they would be agnostic from a profit point of view between executing on those two plans? So if we're determining, first, I want to confirm if I'm understanding that correctly. That if the residual land values, like on a per square foot basis of the, the land itself is the same number, then the developer would be like agnostic, they're getting the same profit?
Um, that it's, it's not, that's, it's not exactly that interpretation, but it is, it's pretty close. So it's saying that if you had two developers and one is like, I really want to build these two detached houses. And the other one is like, I want to build these six townhouses. And they were to both be in a position of trying to negotiate with the same property owner, they could pay about the same thing. It doesn't necessarily, I mean, just the way that like, you know, the profit margin on a larger investment is a larger amount of money. There's some fixed costs of like doing any development. So it's not exactly, exactly the same from the developer's perspective, but it means that they would be pretty comparable in terms of what would be their ability to acquire a site. And then that also means that they're like fairly comparable from the developer's perspective. But it's like, not exactly, exactly that their profit, you know, the amount of profit is precisely the same. Does that, I don't know if that helps or hurts, but it means you're, you're generally right.
Got it. Yeah, yeah, totally. And what I'm trying to get to is understanding this as a tool to say, what are we trying to incentivize by understanding the profit margin of a developer? So they're, they're, from a developer point of view, there look like two clear winners. We build two detached houses or six townhouses. So are we as a commission trying to, by recognizing this, trying to encourage that, to get developers to come in to improve the stock of the housing? I just want to make sure I'm using this as intended.
That's a perfect question, and I think will be helpful for you all to think about that as you're kind of hearing about the standards. What this is telling you is kind of how the market might respond and what, what developers might be more likely to do. So if your highest priority was we want to increase supply, we want as much stuff built as possible, your best option to get the most supply possible is townhouse. And to like get six townhouses on a lot, that's going to be the most new units and it's going to be pretty feasible. If what you want is something else, some communities have really been interested in getting to stacked flats for what, you know, alignment with their housing needs or whatever else. Some communities have a real interest in cottage clusters, right? Depending on what outcomes you're looking for, you can think about how can we use the standards in the code and/or financial incentives that might end up in the HAP to try to move the, you know, adjust things so that they compete a little bit more evenly or so that they are, you know, so if cottage clusters are able to get more units on their site, maybe that is helpful. Those are the kind of considerations that depending on how the community feels about these different outcomes and which one's best aligned with the community's housing needs, that might, that might inform how you want to use the standards and potential incentives to try to tip the scales one way or another.
I'll just add that we've heard a lot from you already, that you're interested in more cottage clusters and smaller units. And we've had a preview from Echo Northwest of these results. And so you'll see some of this weaved into the draft standards already. Particularly incentivizing stacks and cottage clusters.
That's good. I would add too, that, you know, especially with your observation that it's almost even, you know, either or. I would just throw into that, you know, some developers specialize in one over the other. And like right now, a lot of the townhome development terrace has been by the same developer. So you could almost kind of say that's his specialty, though he does other stuff, you could say he really does that. Whereas there might be another developer who shies away from townhome type development because it's, you know, slightly different construction and different headaches that they're dealing with. And like single family homes, that's what I know, that's what I'm going to stick to. So if they're both, you know, if it's sort of dead heat even, we might get either one depending on who wins the bidding more.
I would agree with that interpretation. Yes.
Okay, are we ready for draft standards? Okay, so a couple meetings ago, we presented the idea of having kind of a two-part code, conventional code that has the tables and bonusing and, and kind of other detail as well as a separate design standard section that focuses more on the look and feel. And so that's what we've done. We've taken chapter 1930, which was the single household residential district chapter, mixed in some, or pulled in some of the multiple household residential district information to create this new chapter. And then we, or create the revised chapter. Then we've made a new residential design standards chapter 19.32. And so hopefully you got copies of those with commentary and you're familiar with what those look like. I'm going to start by talking about the conventional code and then move into the design standards. Okay, so the conventional code part, already described where they came from. We did end up taking, rather than just combining those two chapters, we did take out anything that was a design standard and moved it into this new chapter, 19.32, to just keep them very clean. And then we also moved all of the parking standards into 19.125. So you don't need to look in two chapters to find your parking information, you just go to the parking chapter now. Hope that simplifies things. This is just here for reference, just showing which zones, we can refer to this later if we need to. Okay, we have spent about 95% of our time together talking about the conventional standards. You've talked about your priorities for certain bonuses. We haven't yet talked about what you need to do to get the bonuses. We've talked about what you get, but not what you have to give. And so I want to spend a little bit of time going over what you need to give or what the public benefit is. And then we'll keep walking through some of the more conventional standards or the tables. But I hope that that time on the tables is pretty condensed so we can get to design standards. Okay, bonuses, the state's going to require something for affordable housing, get more units, more lot coverage, things like that. We've created what we're calling flexibilities for three other public benefits. And those are things you've mentioned, so tree retention, connections, and sustainable features. The bonus for affordable is, as we've discussed in the previous meetings, you get, if you do one unit per lot that's affordable in the R1 district or two per lot in the R2 district, or 20% of the total units, that's something we've added, then you get the affordability bonus. The affordability levels themselves live in title three. That's where your M F T E program lives. It explains how you basically administer that affordability piece. So that's not in these two chapters, but our chapters point back to that. Okay, so that's what you give, you give this public benefit and then you get what's in the upcoming tables. The tree retention flexibility allows relaxed height and setbacks for actually retaining existing trees on site per the standards that exist today. So in other words, it you can't opt out and use fees in lieu or replace with new trees, you're actually retaining the trees on site. We had some debate on on our team about how far to go with tree retention. Should it be a bigger percent? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't read the little green bubble. Your current requirement is to retain twenty five percent of the significant trees on the site. Those are six inches in diameter at breast height, so. So that would be the requirement to actually keep those on site. And we'll take questions about the bonuses when I'm done with the bonuses, if that sounds good. Okay. So then the connectivity flexibility allows relaxed height and setbacks for providing mid block connections. And those need to be in the middle, two thirds of blocks that are longer than three hundred feet or three hundred feet or longer. Those connections need to be twenty feet wide between buildings and have a ten foot wide pathway so people can walk and bikes can bike through that space. And then you landscape the rest of it. So this is a pretty great example um for somebody that has really provided a lot of amenities along the way too. The second type of connection that qualifies are alleys. And those would occur at the rear of the lot. They need to be twenty feet wide and meet engineering standards and then be dedicated back to the city. Okay, and then we have an exception when there is a great tree in the way that those the location can vary a bit to avoid removal of significant or heritage trees. Significant is a qual-, or a, you know, category of tree. Okay, so here is an area of Mount Lake Terrace that demonstrates the need for connections. And you already know this because you came up with the idea. Just, oops. Following the numbers, flexibility would be granted for mid block connections. Um, number one, through blocks that are longer than three hundred feet. Or number two, connecting cul-de-sacs back to the grid or to each other. Or number three, extending existing streets through those long blocks, so really connecting to other, or making a street continuous. And then any alley dedications. Okay, and then this is a neighborhood in Seattle um with blocks that are over five hundred feet long. This is pretty rare and it's because they're missing an east west street. Um, over time, kind of one middle housing project at a time, the area has developed this informal network of mid block connections. And so you see the mid block connection very formalized in orange. You see partial or private connections in the dashed orange. And then the blocks already had some partial alleys that are contributing to the way you can move around. So if you envision moving from left to right between the blue streets, you can see that you can take one of the little street stubs in blue or the mid block connection and then to an alley and then another mid block connection and then go down. This is my, my house is on this um slide. And we go through those alley connection or all of those mid block connections and alleys a lot. And it really does lend a a walkable component to the neighborhood. Okay. Okay, this one doesn't have a pretty picture on it, but basically this flexibility offers eight inches of wall to encroach into all setbacks, including the height limit. And that basically allows thicker, high performance building envelopes with exterior insulation on the outside of the wall studs without pinching interior dimensions. We started this bonus based on your priority for sustainable design. And I think when you, when we, we should move now to your comments. You can talk about what other sustainability features you may want to add.
Actually, I had a quick question going back to the the mid block connection. And this might be more of a question for Christie. Do we have instances in the city where our block lengths are pretty long, where we would want to consider maybe having more than just a pedestrian mid block connection?
Um, we have two alleys in the city. Um, and it it makes a huge difference. I mean, I uh off of um fifty six, there's the townhomes and it's all um rear loaded and then where the topography is really steep coming off fifty six where there's going to be an issue. Those are also going to be able to rear load off that alley. It just makes a better presentation of the units as well and and moving the parking access um into those. And plus, we're just lacking a lot of those um east west connections in a lot of areas, right? So just if we're thinking true multimodal accessibility for the community, just in general, having some of these connections, even if, I mean, it's kind of, we started this in the town center plan that was adopted um of just having some of the that ability to add those things. And the three hundred foot was taken from Portland, Oregon, very walkable, uh pedestrian friendly, I'm riding a bike, I'm walking, I'm doing whatever. And just that ability to be able to do those things, right? To get in and out of areas versus these big, long blocks. So, yeah, I mean, uh, very supportive of this concept of trying to see if we can, you know, work to get more of these.
Do we have a lot of um block segments that have sections of unimproved right of way that driving by people wouldn't realize that, hey, that's actually public land because it just looks like somebody's yard? I know in Seattle, there's a lot of it and you don't even realize it's.
Um, not really, not in Mount Lake Terrace, we don't unfortunately. So, yeah, we don't have like, oh, we could open this up. Um, we don't really have that. There's very, there's very little uh publicly owned property that, you know, is as far as that goes where the street hasn't been finished. I can only think of one offhand.
Same here. Maybe, maybe one or two and it's like, yeah, not even really feasible for to put a road there.
Yeah, and I mean, we're going to have topographic constraints and all of that stuff, right? It's not going to be just like, oh, we're working with a flat canvas. But there are some areas where we can achieve some connections, definitely.
Yeah, I'm thinking like the area to the south of the where it's kind of built out with the current town center, the zone R three. And you got those like weird horseshoes and all the little loops and whatnot.
Yeah.
I was fighting for that to be redone during the last council, so agreed, yes.
Like, I think there's an, sorry, is this a, you mentioned this is a point of discussion. Okay, great. Um, so I think there's an interesting potential connection between a lot like, you know, more how more townhouses tend to work better on those corner lots, right? Like you put six townhouses and you don't really even notice because it's a corner. But then you put six of them facing like an interior block. Like, I think that is, you know, a potential synergy between getting those mid block connections put in because the more corners you make and the like, if you're creating this nice little, you know, pedestrian pathway or something that then the the neighboring properties can like then open in on and eventually develop into something that kind of mirrors it. Like, I think that is a potential city maker. Um, a a way of, over time, developing like an actual like kind of gentle grid of things that aren't full streets, but still something that like, you know, you would open on. Like, it's more of a European style, like, you know, pedestrian street in a town center or something like that.
Yeah.
Um, I do think that alleyways, uh, you know, if you're defining the front of the lot, like having all the alleyways open directly into the arterials could potentially be disruptive. So maybe like if it's facing an arterial, maybe you have an option for like side yards as well, which is probably less good. But like, if you look at the townhouse developments that are off of that one alleyway between um uh fifty fifth and fifty sixth, that's like south of two thirty eighth. Like, that is kind of a good orientation, I think. Like, those townhouse developments kind of want to have like an alleyway and then like a backyard or, you know, a front yard like on one, like they they want it, they want blocks that are about half the width of what they currently are, I think. So I don't know if that's necessarily an answer, but I think that's an interesting synergy. Um, I like the idea of allowing a lot of additional bonuses for insulation, especially continuous insulation. Um, I think um things like a height limit um relaxations for things like solar panels might also work pretty well. I think uh if there is also some options for synergy, I think um later in the presentation, there might be something about um uh impervious surface reduction. Like, I think those also make a lot of sense as incentives um for sustainability because then it addresses our stormwater capacity issue as well.
Yeah, um, the stormwater code was recently um updated um not too long ago. And there's some fairly restrictive code requirements now. You kind of got to get out a jail free card when you were doing straight, single family residential for the most part um before, but those are tightening up quite a bit. Um, Laura Reed, our stormwater manager, just left. And so um we don't have a, we have somebody hired, um, I don't know when they start. But I could have a further conversation on that to see if there's something that we could do flexibility wise. But I would say um that's getting tightened up quite a bit. So I don't know maybe if there's going to be a lot there just because of what the requirements are going to be, but I could check into it. But I'm thinking that may be a little tougher as far as one of our options, but we can definitely check on that. And I will.
Okay, and this might be partly also offered with tree retention, but um urban heat island effect, I think, is another major thing we should be looking at in terms of incentivization. Um, ideally, I think the building code should be, you know, incentivized towards things like net zero and passive house. And um I don't know what kind of uh and and solar shading, things like that. I don't know, maybe it's because I grew up in Florida, but um like I'm very aware of like the potential for heat here. So I think those are like big things that if we can incentivize over the city, it will give us a much better future than um the alternative.
And real quickly, I wanted to piggyback kind of off of your first comment too about, you know, alleys and, you know, extending these things when they don't exist currently. Say we have a developer who, let's say they buy a corner lot.
Right.
And they wanted, they want to do this, they want, they they see the benefit of it, but they haven't yet acquired the rest of the block. And they maybe won't end up being able to acquire the rest of the block. Does the city have a mechanism to say, hey, once we've started this, we've identified, we want to continue this to mandate that any future development, like total redevelopment of the lot that happens on that block, that we are, we are able to continue the alley or whatever it is that we're talking about?
So we haven't mandated it, but they, we do on the other side of fifty fifth, which is a Landsverk um development. We do have a portion of the alley up to that last lot with that in mind of trying to get some additional alley access. So we did it ten feet on the one property, thinking there would be ten feet of property um um on the other property. And then hopefully we could, we could obtain, because all of that's going to be ripe for development at some time. Um.
And quickly, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong. In in the case of that developer, he is a willing and active participant in that plan.
Yes.
Okay, so we may not always be in that situation.
Well, correct. I mean, and that was a little twisting of the arm, if you will, but he was a willing participant. Um, just uh seeking to try to do a better design than just have that straight side of the townhouses lined up on the street. So we had, you know, more of like what's on the other side of the street where the front of the units are facing. Um, you know, sometimes the cure is worse than the disease. I mean, these are things you learn, but I I mean, the intent, I think, is good. We really need to think through it, but yeah, that's something. I think planning is a lot more gung ho than maybe your engineering department um just because of long term maintenance of all these alleys and that type of a thing. But, you know, again, it's livability, accessibility. Um, you know, if these are the things that the community wants and desires, and we hear it all the time, at least planning hears it, um, then I think we should make an effort to try to to put some mechanisms in place to do that.
Is it worth it to try and identify those areas ahead of any potential development? Or should we really wait until a proposal comes?
No, I think we should identify them beforehand. I mean, it's just good planning. Um, we've talked about doing a, you know, a trails plan and a and a plan, those kind of PED plans and accessibility plans for a long time. I think we should really try to encourage that to happen sooner than later and work with parks and engineering and planning all together to put a a plan. I mean, you're always going to be more successful if we have a vision and a plan of what our intent is, right? So something we need to do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I briefly forgot what I was going to say. Um, I think uh there also needs to be a distinction made between alleyways and mid block connections.
Yeah, absolutely.
Like the, uh, you know, if you were to replicate that one development we've been talking about on the alleyway west of fifty fifth on the other side, like there would be no reason for cars to go down the rest of the alleyway. They just filter into the places where the garages are. And then that mid block connection that is currently the alleyway would just be like, you know, you can make it a little park like street or something. So um I think that's probably also an important distinction to make.
Yeah, I mean, you could see cases where it could be either or. Um, I mean, I live on an alley and other than, you know, like my, my home, my garage backs onto the alley. But other than that, that's utilized basically for people walking on the alley more so than people are ripping through the alley, you know, instead of the street. It just really doesn't happen. Um, you know, do people use the alleys? Yeah, they do, but it's not like a faster way to get somewhere.
Yeah, but it also doesn't need to like, you know, maybe there's a potential for it to not like, you know, alleys are really good service areas too, whether it's like dumping your garbage.
Yes.
You know, drinking with your neighbors on King of the Hill. But I think.
Yes, and yes. Yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be built to the same standards as a street that has a car.
And and usually they're not, you know, they're not built to the same standard, right? Um, and it is, it's great for service, the garbage, you know, something that we're, we struggle with here in Mount Lake Terrace of um, you know, forty cans out on the sidewalk, blocking parking and that. And I mean, that's going to be, that's a real issue as we move forward with increasing densities that it's a problem now. It's going to be a huge problem moving forward if we don't address it. Yeah.
I know there was a discussion that at some point in the future, we would talk about the initial part of this presentation. Is that now or should we continue or do you want to hold that until the end? Because I had questions about the feasibility. Okay. Um, so I think it's interesting that six townhouses pencils out a lot better than eight cottages when there are eight cottages is more units. Why is that?
Um, so there are two, two things going on there. One is that, and I apologize, this isn't really clear from what's shown here, but um, the test fits, like if you kind of marry this up with the test fits, um, the density of the cottage clusters is um that it's actually a little bit lower, so it's definitely. So it's definitely lower than the six townhouse option. And I think it's a little bit lower even than the four townhouse option, just because of the, they were tested on like a cul-de-sac corner. So not necessarily being able to fit units into all the like funky shapes and having to work around a courtyard. But that was a, because those cul-de-sac corners provide sort of a little bit of a larger, thank you for, thank you. Yes, this will be helpful. Yes, okay. So, um, so you're not, you're not able to kind of pack them in at the same density. You can see that cottage housing double lot, you're only getting six on two lots as opposed to six on one lot. And on the cul-de-sac version, you're getting eight on a double cul-de-sac lot, which is four per lot and the lots are a little bigger. So they just aren't able to achieve the same densities as townhouses. And I would say also small detached units, I mean, it kind of can go either way, but sometimes on small detached units, the, the cost, the, as the unit size gets, comes down, the cost per square foot to build it goes up. And so you're not, like the difference between a cottage sized detached home and a full-sized detached home is a little bit bigger, like kitchens and some more bathrooms, but also just a lot of kind of drywall and carpet and things that are comparatively cheap. So building a lot of small detached units, if, if you can get a good sales price for those, that can be a feasible option, but, but the cost to build those small detached units sometimes makes it so that there, because of the space needed between them, you can't necessarily get the higher density and then the cost to build them means you have to, you know, you have to be able to get like a pretty good price for them, for them to, even if you could get the same number, for them to be able to compete with something like a townhouse where maybe you're getting a little more square footage in that unit. So that's, that's the reason. The density is the biggest one. And then the fact that kind of small detached units are just, can be expensive, more expensive to build on a per square foot basis than some of the other options.
Okay, that's interesting because I know that like there is a jump when you go to the townhouse because you start having to add things like sprinklers and maybe more fire sound things depending on local regulations.
Yeah.
But.
The cost difference between attached and detached is not, it's, it's less that difference and it's more that when cottage units are smaller than a comparable townhouse that you just are, you're cutting out all the cheap square footage. And so that cost, people are, people have to be willing to pay almost, you know, as much as they would pay for like a larger detached home because it costs, the cost isn't so much left to build than a larger detached home.
Okay, so the, the chart we're looking at isn't necessarily a one-to-one correlation of how many units you can fit on a standard lot. It's based on the test fits and some of those lots may be larger and some of those lots may be smaller.
Yes.
Okay.
And sorry if I was confusing from that chart.
No, I think that like if we do want to incentivize things like townhouses, I think, or cottage courts, like I almost wonder if like we want to look at some, like, you know, the, the spaces between the cottage town, the cottages are like, you know, a little bit useless, right? Like if you push them together and made them duplexes, is that like a flexibility we could give that would allow you to fit more on the lot? Are things like parking minimums going to have an impact, that sort of thing?
There's nothing.
Yeah, I mean, the parking definitely has an impact. Sorry, Heidi, I didn't mean to talk over you.
No, go ahead, Becky.
Hard to tell who's talking over there. The parking definitely has an impact for this and Heidi can talk more about the physical fitting of the things on site. I do think that the option of combining some attached and some detached units around a courtyard, I've, I've seen that in a number of places. And I think that option of being able to do some attached and some detached can be helpful to be able to fit a few more units on, but then still have some detached units where that makes sense.
Yeah. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to mention that we have relaxed some of the standards for cottages already, including setbacks when they're shorter, right? So we expect some of them to be shorter. And then parking, you can see, is pretty constraining. And then the other big thing for cottage housing that doesn't apply anywhere else is the 20% open space requirement of, in that courtyard, which is a big, it's a big difference compared to townhouses or any of the other types.
I think a really important thing to remember too, when we're talking about parking, especially on this test fit at a cul-de-sac, on-street parking in a cul-de-sac is almost impossible, especially since you have other units in that cul-de-sac. So that's even more of a impact and consideration to why we probably wouldn't see it. So it's the nature of the beast.
Yeah, I mean, so in my mind, this is like, you know, there's a disconnect like, right? Like people seem to kind of, like when we poll people, they kind of prefer the cottage housing and, but like there's obviously a very big incentive for townhouses. So like this is kind of drilling down into why that is and like, you know, I think what are some things that people like about cottages that then can translate into something that, you know, starts to maybe push more of these together or waste less of the site, where you still maintain that, like, you know, relationship where, you know, is it that they like living in their own building? Is it they like the access to outside? Is they like not having like, you know, living, you know, two stories above a garage on the ground floor? Like I think that's sort of a, you know, that question is sort of what would help us, you know, if we wanted to respond to public opinion and, you know, make the development code more flexible for something that isn't just like, you know, ramrod, like, you know, driveway on one side, pedestrian access on the other. But maybe it's more of like oriented around a courtyard or something like, I think that's where we need to start looking at incentivization for that kind of thing.
I think we have incentivized it or at least relaxed setbacks and other standards that we'll go through when we start going through the tables. I also want to say test fits are not design standards, right? They're just a very quick look so that they could do some math. And there's nothing in the draft standards that say you can't have duplexes or even townhouses, right? Because our courts can also be attached. So I can see, so on the left here, the courtyard apartments, I can, as we were doing the test fits, I was thinking you actually could have a couple of these, especially on the, one on the right, the sixth unit where there are garages for those and then try to squeeze another unit in the back because you have additional parking and maybe some of them are duplexes, you absolutely could do that. And I think the standards and the housing types are flexible enough to allow that to happen. You may choose to show precedence or we could choose to show precedence that inspire people.
Yeah, the more, the more we can do to support, like, you know, I, I guess it could be socially friendly housing, maybe like this, whether that's examples or, you know, like Seattle's got their pre-approved ADU program, for example, where it's sort of, you can just goes permitting pretty quickly, like maybe the, I don't know what kind of like procedural things like this, but I think the kind of development we're describing is a little weird. So like, you know, people just aren't really building them all that much, right? And, you know, we can see kind of why, but if we want to like inspire it, I think maybe there are things that can be done to like, you know, provide examples or, I don't know what that looks like, but it's probably more than just design standards, I think.
Yeah. Examples. One other thing that you're, you're required to do that could help is consider how your impact fees are scaled for smaller units. And that is something that just from the work that I have done over the years in different communities can make a pretty big difference for units like this. So, and this type of housing, again, where you're getting into like a small unit and you're caught, you're trying to like really get your costs down so that people are going to feel it, get enough of a lower price compared to a bigger house with its own yard that they're like, okay, that makes sense for me. And so those, getting those impact fees adjusted down a little bit for smaller units can make a difference. So that's something that, that is also part of the legislation and, and I think that's a, a good, that like it particularly helps things like cottage housing that tend to, you know, the, one of the things that people like about them is the smallness of the units. And so incentivizing that through accounting for less impact from smaller units is, is one way to get there.
And the city's required to go through that process, which is essentially just what Becky said. So basing impact fees on square footage, which will come to be this year. So that's helpful too. You could also consider, you know, right now, you've got a 20-foot setback and these are two-story, not three stories. Do you need 20 feet? Or could you arrange these possibly test scooch, one or two more units on there potentially where that could pencil? And then with all things being even where you're getting some breaks on impact fees and the other things, now does, does something like this that everybody tells us they desire, maybe it, it can compete with a townhome development?
Yeah, I think all those things make sense and are definitely worth exploring in our design standards. But it sounds like things like, well, parking makes a big difference, but maybe elevators and sprinklers and stuff maybe make less of a difference at this scale. Is that safe to say? Yeah.
Elevators are very expensive. Sprinklers can be pretty expensive, but I don't think we're, we're not into, all of these are at a scale that would not require elevators, all the test fit ones. Some of them are, you know, if they go to four stories, we'd get into elevators. But yeah, I don't think we're, we're not really talking about elevators for any of these housing types.
Yeah, and currently in the city, it's 3,000 square feet and above requires sprinklers. There are some certain type of development standards and such, but we're at 3,000 square feet right now, so.
Okay, great. I think that's all the questions I had about this, oh, except for, I think you did have like an affordability incentive. I did have a question about that. Your one affordable unit, is it like the maid's quarters in between the two mansions or do we have requirements that they kind of have to be similar?
That's a great question. The, the model code, the state model code on this has language that it has to be kind of comparable as much as possible to the other units. And I think, Kristy, that, I think that made it into the, the version you guys are working on, right?
I saw it.
Yeah, I mean, and we're still working on that, but yeah, that's not the intent that, yeah, you're getting the maid's quarters. I don't even know if we have those in Mount Lake Terrace, but if, yeah, no, I mean, we're yeah.
Great.
Okay. Should we move on to tables? Okay, well, you know, let me. There was some good conversation about connectivity and, and asking, should you have these locations on a map? So let me come back and say, or ask, do these standards seem like a good temporary set of standards to roll with in the middle housing code, knowing that you may be coming back to look at it more comprehensively? And I'll just say, I added this slide because this is kind of informal mix of things that have happened through one lot at a time that can add up to some mid-block connection that you would get through, could get through the middle housing code we've proposed. And certainly you could get more if you located them in space. The second part of that is, so does it seem like a good temporary thing? And then we'll ask, as we go through, is the what you get enough to incentivize it? Okay, so let's look for these green thing, green labels in the tables to see if we think it will incentivize it enough. Same goes with the previous, the tree retention example. Okay. Some of these I'm going to go through quickly because we've talked about them quite a bit. The new lot standards are consistent with the old RS 4800 and commerce will hold you to that minimum lot size when they're calculating density. So going lower, there's no reason to do that. I'm going to move quicker. Okay. Density standards, again, consistent with our previous discussions. We talked about this even in our first meeting, so I'm going to move on. Lot coverage, we've adjusted it a little bit since we last met. They are slightly below the existing standard in the RS zone, the lowest RS zones, but they increase to the RS baseline once you get to four units per lot, right? So we're incentivizing more units. And then they increase to 60% consistent with the current RM zones with six or more units, if 20% are affordable. So they go up to that 60%. Okay, and then you, of course, you get more lot coverage as a bonus for affordability in all the zones. Okay, so you asked for some examples of what the lot coverages are in some recent development. And so you can see the addresses here, one on the left is about 49% lot coverage. It's kind of blocking some of the car access in the back. The 63% lot coverage in this one, that's the biggest example we have and it's very, very efficiently parked and very, very small setbacks are allowing that to happen. Then just a couple of other examples, 46% lot coverage, little less efficient parking in that one, bigger setbacks and even, you know, planting between the, the parking and the building on that left one. 48% lot coverage on a smaller project, bigger setbacks and 53% lot coverage on that one. Hopefully that gives you a good visual. And so we're proposing basically between, let's go back to that table, 30% for one unit, right? But 40% for four units and then 60% for six units plus with that bonus. Okay, let's come back and you can make some comments when we get to the ends of the tables. These are also just the previous test fits from our last meeting, just to represent that townhouse lot coverage is some of the highest compared to the other housing types. So that's why we're showing you lot coverage in those, in the townhouse developments. The only one that's larger than the six townhouses is the courtyard housing, but we have already used 40% as the baseline. So you're seeing 40% lot coverage there. It's already the baseline for four units, so that courtyard housing should still work really well. Courtyard housing would have that 20% courtyard anyway. Okay. Now, these work together with height standards. So consistent with our discussion at the last meeting, we've added the maximum heights for buildings in the rear yard versus separately regulating dattos. Okay, so together with the bonus heights and the lot coverage, these step up the overall scale of development per zone. It's, you got to really look at how the rear and the front yards are working together. In some cases, the, the front yard doesn't pop up like between three and four, but the rear yard does. And so they're all working towards that greater scale as you move towards R4.
What's the difference between the front and the rear yard? Where is that line to market?
It's 80%. So the rear, the rear yard is the 20% of the lot depth.
Okay, so we're talking about height of like, if we were looking at the current building envelope we have, we're talking about, you know, generally within the current building envelope. And then in the rear yard, you have lower heights. So in that case, are we allowing construction in the rear yard then?
We are allowing construction in the rear yard. Let's move to the setback slide. And actually I can come back to that. So rear yards, 20-foot setback in R1, 20 or 15, depending on your heart, or excuse me, height in R2, and then 15 and 10 in R4. So that'll start to really matter in R4 and R3. It may not depending on your lot depth in R1, it'll, it'll a little bit in R1. Right. Let's go back to this, scale and unit size tables. So we know you're interested in regulating unit size, right? So reasonable level and you want to avoid McMansions. Somebody said that last time. So these tables are just a blush at how lot coverage, height and density work together on a typical lot. And then it's showing baseline and bonus scenarios. The baselines are in white. The bonuses are in blue. And so this is showing a typical 7,200 square foot lot. This is the one we used for the test fits. And so the biggest single-family house in the R1 would be 5,400 square feet. That's still pretty big, not huge, huge, huge. And then the average area of six townhouses on a typical lot, the average townhouse would be 1,800 square feet. Now, you could do these tables for every lot size, right? We could do it for the 9,600 and the 4,800, et cetera. But we use them to inform the building coverages that we proposed. Okay. We, our team still feels that FAR is a more powerful tool. And we know that you are hesitant to use it. So I think maybe you do a first version and if it's not getting you the results that you want, you could come back and add FAR. It's particularly good in bonusing. And we can talk more about that. But right now, draft standards are showing this combination of height and scale with density to control scale.
Would it be either FAR in this or both?
Typically, we would more finely tune the FAR numbers. And then put a pretty general couple lot coverages, maybe a lot coverage per zone. The lot coverages here are highly tuned, right? I've never, I don't know, Becky, maybe you've seen something that's tuned with lot coverage, but we are, there are a lot of numbers in there. We've, I mean, I think we think it can be, it can be okay, may not be as powerful as FAR. And I don't know, Becky, do you, oh, actually, Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, no, I wanted to throw my thoughts out there that after our last meeting, I did look more into FAR. And it seems that is kind of a standard nowadays for developers that developers are used to. And I understand that like maybe as a, you know, citizen that is not a builder or whatever, it seems, you know, might seem complex. And, you know, you have to obviously use spreadsheets or, you know, images to truly understand what you're getting into. But it seems to me for ease of use and for scalability and for allowing other developers to come in and build for us. I'd actually love to see FAR used just because it seems to be kind of the standard everyone's adopting.
I think it'd be worth a look to see how these translate into FAR. If we're talking about adding FAR to this, I feel like they're both kind of doing the same thing and they might wind up over complicating it a bit.
I agree, it could be complicated. If you do want to add FAR, we could scale back the number of lot coverages. Wouldn't be necessary anymore because you'd be controlling with FAR.
Sorry to ask for a re-tabulation of this, but like, you know, I would be interested to see a proposal that has FAR.
This would be really easy to calculate FARs on. Sometimes you think you're going to go into a community and talk about parking all the time. In this one, we're talking about lot coverage and FAR all the time, which is so much more interesting. Okay.
Real quick, since we are sort of at a talking point here, I'm just kind of curious. On the lot coverage example, you know, we kind of made, you made the comment of the, the one that has the 63% lot coverage, you know, kind of tight and efficient. You know, when I look at that and I'm looking at, where is the 37% open space? It's really hard to find. And then, you know, realizing that that essentially is an auto court, that's the, the open space. So it's not really like open space with like brass and trees and, you know, kind of what we're desiring. It's pavement. And so I'm curious if, when we're talking about open space, do we want to have pavement be considered as part of that calculation?
Some cities do regulate that. It's literally lot coverage. You have lot coverage by structures. And so you could choose to do that. Just want to point out that the open space is allowed to be on the roof and that's where it's occurring. If you look closely at that, they all have roof decks that are private. And that would be allowed in your new, it's allowed in your current code and it would be allowed in your new code.
Yeah. It's just the type of vegetation and greenery that we're hoping to see. You might get a potted plant on the roof, but you're not going to get a tree.
And so this example is 63%. And where you're going to be allowed to do 60% is when you have 20% affordable housing in the R3 or R4. Otherwise, they're 50%, which looks a little more like the one on the left, which, sorry, you can't see the landscaping yet because it's in construction. And, and a little more similar to these.
Yeah, I mean, even the one on the left, you look at it and, you know, you realize that, you know, when you, when it, that, when the, when the, the open space is kind of squeezed throughout, you know, the, the, um, the whole lot and basically in terms of mandatory setbacks. You're still not getting, you know, significant, I mean, you're, you're technically getting open space, but it's, you know, it's, I don't think it's anything that anybody was, you know, really hopes for and desires, but you know, it's sort of the, the nature of the development.
I mean, so there's like, you know, we've kind of got the two things are opening is built, or regulating here is building and not building. But I think the third thing that is sort of a missing variable is building, not building and car. And especially for a lot of these, car takes up like a lot of it. I don't know if I've seen a city regulate lot area used for car on the ground plane. I imagine it would be expensive and hard. But I do think that is the underlying reason, other than just like eliminating parking mandates, which other cities in our area are doing. I think that is like, you know, the third variable here that we're all kind of trying to get at, but we're missing.
You can reduce, you can eliminate your parking requirements. That is something you can do. Developers will still, without a maximum parking number, developers will still build what the market wants.
I'd be interested to hear what they, what they're finding that is.
Becky, do you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I would say for, for this area, I would be, I would be surprised if you saw ownership housing without at least one parking space. For rental, I think you could see it go, like if the stocked flats are similar, I think you could see it go below one-to-one, especially if there's on-street parking spaces and people know they're going to be able to find some place to park nearby. But I think selling a townhouse, yeah, I think, I think it'd be, not, it's not, not probably viable right now that you would see people build townhouses without parking. Maybe over time and maybe closer to the light rail. You could start to see not having, you know, townhouses built without parking. But in general, we would assume most people, if they're going to buy a unit, they, they want to, you know, they want to have a place they know they can park. And if they're renting, then they're maybe more flexible on parking in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
If they have a car.
Right. I also have talked to a few developers and just even getting a loan financing. Because most people desire a place to parks in a lot of these different examples. So just for financing purposes, typically at least one parking space is required, or they'll build it.
If we do, if we do. Oh, no. If we, if we, if we do continue with parking minimums, I'd be really interested to know what that delta is between what the market would provide and what we're requiring. Like, are we overparked somehow from the market?
We probably are now, but I think with the new requirements, that's going to change significantly. But there's definitely been a hesitation. At least on council's behalf of what that looks like. But they're aware that there's going to be some limitations on that with the new legislation. I also think we always have to be mindful that we're trying to provide for middle housing. So the way that we commonly think of the on a grandma's house and we got white picket fence, we got the front yard, we got the backyard, we got all the yards, is just not reality when we're talking about, we want more attainable housing and different options than I think we got, I think, a little bit differently than we always have.
Did I keep moving?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Where were we? Okay, so I'm asking you to look at the blue, which is associated with affordable housing and the bonuses there. So you get a lot more height for affordability. It'll, you get more height for the, flexibility is two and three, which is the trees, tree retention and connectivity in both the front and the rear yards. Setbacks, we've gone over, but the important thing here is that we are trying to incentivize courts or cottage housing by reducing the setbacks in the rear yard when you have shorter buildings. So that's there. Side setbacks reduce similarly as height reduces in R3 and R4. So three feet if it's one to two stories, so very, very small setback. And then going up to seven feet if you have four stories. Seeing some nods here. And then we've added building separation. This becomes a lot more important when you have multiple buildings on a site. 10 feet, or if it's just one story, six feet. This is consistent, if you think about it, with a five-foot setback on one lot and five-foot setback on another lot. Or three feet on one lot and three feet on the other lot at one story. We're just putting it right in the table now. Okay, so no bonuses here, but then we have the flex, the setback reductions. And so for affordability and trees and in the front yard, wait, hold on. So rear yard setback reduction, so we didn't give a front setbacks reduction. This is rear yard, each of them could be reduced five feet for affordability. And that's also because you want, you're getting those extra units on the site, so you need room for them. Similarly, in the front and rear yards for the trees and connections, another reduction of five feet. That's so you can fit those connections and retain trees on the site. And you need flexibility to do that. And then the side yards would reduce two feet.
Does that include the land that is ceded to the city for the mid-block connection? Or do you redraw the property line?
We said that for, well, the mid-block connections are not dedicated back to the city, only alleys. And so we said that you can use, it's basically, you use it to your advantage or not, right? So you can include that land when you're calculating density and other things, but you don't have to count it when you're counting open space. So that it still maintains the bonus.
Okay.
Is the, the five foot for like say affordability and the five foot for trees, can those two be combined? Or is it pick one?
I should say they cannot be combined. I don't think we wrote that, so let's make a note.
Heidi, I assume they could combine like a front yard and side yard reduction, right? It just, they couldn't double up on the rear yard flexibility.
That's right, Becky.
Like if they were retaining a tree in whatever, yeah.
Like you can't do a rear plus a rear, but you can do a rear plus a front plus a side or something like that.
Oh, so it's only one or the other, it's not both?
Well.
Or you could, you could add a like, you have to, regardless, you still have to have at least five feet of rear setback after you add this altogether or something like that, where depending on the zone you're in, you might not get that other five feet.
I think we need to look at it pretty carefully because like with a 10-foot setback in R4, putting them together and doing a zero lot line seems maybe challenging. So let, I think it's a really good point and we should look at it.
Yeah, I think in that case, it's almost good to look at regulating it like a space. So you look at maybe the aspect ratio of the cross-section or something where you have like the height of the building and then you have a depth. And maybe the building comes a little shorter, but then you can go a little closer to the property line. And then that might, incentive might change, but then, you know, you're creating more of like a, a street deal. So it's not just leftover spaces thrown together that like, you know, are there only for light and air. But maybe there's some kind of flexibility that's given that's more proportional to the space rather than just a raw number.
That's a good comment. We're, you see, we're starting to use that, right, on, in R3 and R4 on both the rear yard and the side yards. It's a good comment. Yep, still a draft. Thanks for your input.
I'm reminded of an example and years ago, I saw in one of my urban planning textbooks where they highlighted a skyscraper that was able to add an additional 20-plus floors because of all the different bonuses they took advantage of. And shame on for that city not realizing that at the time. And I hate to say it, the city was Seattle. Yeah, they changed the, they changed the rules. That's back when the heights were still lower in downtown. Now, now that's different, but yeah, that, they got away with like 20 extra floors.
Okay, so these are the main reductions for the trees and connections. And so you're seeing the height bonuses of a half-story essentially. And the setback reductions of five feet or two feet. And so the question is, is that enough to incentivize mid-block connections and alleys? We have also discussed with you very briefly the idea that there could be a parking bonus. And I wonder if this could be a place you'd be interested in that or where parking bonuses might be best applied for which community benefits? If you're interested in that, sounds like from some discussion tonight, you might be interested in that and understanding, thinking about how much room is given to cars.
I think it makes sense to give, you know, if you're trying to preserve some trees on the site that already exist, you're probably doing some, you know, weird puzzling. So giving flexibility, I think, makes sense. If we're talking about mid-block connections, it would still have to function as a mid-block connection. So I could see that being like a bit more challenging if you were to reduce that to like, you know, somebody's got, you know, this two-foot thing you have to walk through sideways or something. But, so it would still have to, yeah. So I think it would still make sense to give flexibility for saving the tree. But I don't know how far we want to take that in terms of functionality.
I'm not sure I totally followed. So you're interested in a parking bonus for trees because if you, maybe if you're reducing the amount of parking on site, there's more room for the tree.
Right. I think if you've got, you know, a tree above a certain size, it is, you know, retention like, and you're trying to make it work on the site. Like I think giving some flexibility in terms of parking and setbacks does make sense.
I think that kind of goes back to your comment, though, about these being able to be financed. And if it's just a one-to-one ratio, you know, one unit, one parking stall. And all of a sudden, we're saying, oh, yeah, you don't need, you can kill one of those parking stalls. Well, then now you have a unit that doesn't have parking, which means it's probably not going to get financed, which means it's probably not.
Yeah, but that's a market-driven thing as opposed to a regulation. If they can get financing for it, then if they can't get financing for it, I think. If they can get financing for it, then, if they can't get financing for it, I think that's like an artificial limitation of the market rather than something we're putting in our code, right?
Why don't we work with these bonuses? And I think you can monitor it, and if it's not incentivizing, my sense, and this is just based on an architect slash urban designer's opinion, and not based on something Echo Northwest has studied, my sense is that it might not be enough to incentivize those connections to be dedicated or really given over, because it's just a little bit more, might not quite be enough. But you can monitor how it goes and, and then adjust it. I think, you know, everybody's learning about this in the, in the region. You can tweak it as you go.
Yeah, and I think that chart that we had at the beginning where you had the really giant bar where you went from like four townhouses to six sound houses, that's like the, the place where those incentives seem to make the most sense, it sounds like.
Okay. All right. So that was, those were the tables. This chapter, if you remember, this is the basic chapter, also has traditionally held the place where accessory dwelling units were outlined. And so this part of the code has been made consistent with HB 1337. So we've set the density and maximum area of 1,000 square feet per that law. We're also regulating height and setbacks per the table that we just reviewed. So ADUs are not regulated any differently physically than other buildings on the site or other units on the site outside of their size of what qualifies. Parking's covered in the parking chapter, that's no longer in here. And then on the right, you see, we've added a provision that even if your current house maxes out the lot coverage, you're still allowed to build two ADUs. Because those, those houses were built before the lot coverage was kind of lowered for three units. Okay, so this portion of the code also included quite a lot about cottage housing. You really wanted to incentivize it, you had a lot of standards. A lot of them have already been incorporated into the middle housing code because it allows more density and more buildings per site. And so this section of the code got much smaller. They're now called detached courts or courts. And then you had a number of units you needed to have before it split into two, and I think you said it had to have eight units. Through the test fits, we think you should go down to six to make a cottage court. But really primarily with cottages, you need to follow the rest of the code. As well as the upcoming design standards that we're going to go over soon. I guess I have a question here. So you had a carriage housing unit, which is basically a dwelling above a garage, one allowed per four cottages. Is there a reason to limit those? I think we just kind of talked earlier about maybe having real flexibility and being able to park under them. Should we strike that part and not regulate parking under a unit in cottages?
I, I know for me, when I think of cottages, I don't really think of the example we have in the city right now, especially, you know, two-sta, a-story, kind of more massive looking building, I think of more smaller, kind of like what we were talking about earlier, more courtyard style, smaller units. And I really don't see having a small unit, but just sitting on top of a, I think, sort of lose that intention that, you know, at least for me, that I would like to see with that type of development. I know that it does make it then a, an issue for, okay, where are they parking their car? You know, how's, you know, how's that going to work out? But for me, just, just the idea of seeing a full court, you know, courtyard-type complex of just garages with something above it doesn't, from a design point of view, I, I know that's not something I would see. How that translates into.
Yeah.
That's why we hire you guys.
Yeah, well, and your current standard is one carriage housing unit above for every four cottages.
Yeah, the counterpoint to that is I could see like, you know, maybe if you have a site where you have six or eight feet of elevation change across like the front of the site, and then you're able to pull the cars in underneath some of the cottage housing, that reduces the amount of total land that's taken up by building plus cars. And so I think it makes sense to have, like, you know, I'm not sure where the number of like one per four came from, other than maybe like four parking spaces makes kind of a reasonable sized, like cottage housing or apartment above. So I would guess that it's a regulation that doesn't matter much, but I don't know what removing it would do.
You could park under some units and then have maybe potential to add, so in this example, you could add another unit if you had more room for parking. Right, so if you parked under the front two units here off of that, you have extra parking stalls and so you could probably fit another unit. It doesn't have a great relationship to the courtyard, but you could figure that out.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You know, especially if there's topographical things or anything like that.
I like the topographical thing and you have, we have that later in the code.
Heidi, that might also be something you could consider for like tree retention or mid-block or something else where you kind of need a little more site flexibility. I wonder if folks would be interested in that as an additional way to provide flexibility for kind of how the units are configured on the lot in, in one of those situations.
It's a great idea.
That's exactly what I was going to say, I was going to play devil's advocate against myself. And that if, you know, the parking is under the unit, then that does free up the open space. I still go back to my first comment that I don't want to see a whole development of a design like that. But maybe if it's a situation where, to achieve the density that we want, if one of those units does have that, you know, I'm fine with keeping it one, but again, to have them all be able to, just from an aesthetic.
Yeah.
It sounds, it sounds like your, it sounds like your complaint maybe, or your concern maybe that, you know, you basically build the, the, the townhouse-type development where they're facing each other, but then you just separate them. So like in your entire ground plane is taken up by cars and parking, except for like the courtyard in the middle where you're then like a story above your little park space?
Partly, because you know, in other parts of this conversation in the code, we talk about, do we want 50% or less of, you know, what, what is that percentage of the ground floor do we want as being the garage? In these cases, we're looking at maybe 100% of the, that first floor being a garage, like if it's a Y garage, or more than 50%, especially if these are smaller scale cottage, cottage-type homes. And so I look at that as well. It's literally a garage with a bedroom above. And I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's something that we want to encourage.
Right, and coming up is the habitable space standards that are along the street. I see Becky has her hand raised.
I was just going to suggest, and, and this sort of goes back to Heidi, the question you were raising earlier about whether the, flexibility was enough to get at some of the mid-block crossing, or mid-block connections and alleys and things like that. And I, one option would be to say, you can't do this unless it backs up to an alley. Or, or is, I guess, mid-block crossing is probably not the way you want to do that, because that's a, then you, you get more of the, looking down that drive aisle as opposed to having it be in the back. But I think saying that this is not allowed unless, unless it's accessed from something, an alley or a rear, a rear driveway that doesn't, doesn't face towards a primary street, I think that could be an incentive. And it would get at that issue a little bit of, of not having, I mean, part of what people like about cottages is that they, they are like kind of small and they aren't dominated by garages. And so I think you said, the, the main way you get to do this is if you are coming in off of an alley or a rear kind of shared drive, then maybe still it wouldn't make sense in a lot of cases. I would say I don't see this happen a lot. But, but the option of being able to, you know, put, put a driveway along the back, put garages with little kind of small units above, and then do kind of a courtyard in front of that, I can see that potentially working on some larger sites. So that might be an option worth considering.
I also think the topog, like, maybe not coming back to the top topography, but like that vertical relationship between the unit above the garage and the courtyard, like, that's actually, you know, does the unit face the street or does it face the courtyard? Or does it face, you know, the side? Like, that's almost like a completely different kind of real spatial relationship to the courtyard, because you're elevated above it and you're not really part of it. So if they were able to like mitigate that somehow, I don't know if they have like, you know, a staggered, or whatever that looks like. You know, maybe that relationship to the courtyard is an important factor as well of the main living space, not just like, you know, a stairway next to the garage or something. So I think there's like, I don't know, I see why our cottage housing development code is long if you're trying to enforce a certain standard and aesthetic, but like, you know, I think that relationship is important too. If you're talking about that concern of, you know, is it apartments above garages or is it a cottage?
Or if they're off, you may have missed Becky saying.
Yeah, like are the drive, I would say the only thing I can see, like in this example here, you could put the access for garages on the bottom of those units and then have a unit on top. My concern would be just treatment of the blank wall on the first floor, if that is what's fronting your open space. So it looks like it walks like what we all picture, I guess, in some semblance of your, you know, you have your open space, your gathering space of the community, you don't want just a plain blank wall.
Would it be in that case, because that's something that I was thinking of too, where it, it has to be more than just the garage on the first floor then? Some sort of active.
I, I don't, I mean, yeah, there, there has to be some building considerations, which, because of a garage space, but I can check into that too. I would think it's more in a, it could be an aesthetic thing when you're fronting that open space area. But I would say those, that has been desired, a lot of people have talked to us about those kind of carriage houses type stuff. Particularly because like we've talked about, this cottage housing is harder to develop. So what does that look like in us trying to get more cottage housing, but maybe in a better design than, you know, so?
I'm just giving you some scale for how big those garages are. If it's roughly 10 by 20, you would still have 10 feet of space in the front and 10 feet off of the courtyard, roughly. You could also design those units a little bit bigger than the others.
You still have to run more, or with the other units than just have the detached parking. So you're not like trying to provide a parking space for each unit.
Well, then you get to add another unit. Because you, we were constrained by parking before. So now you can add a unit, we can design in PowerPoint.
Better than Blue Beam.
Yeah, when I was picturing this, I was picturing like a unit above the existing parking spaces. So like, you know, maybe there's one tall one at the back or something and you build a ramp up to it and.
I think in this case, you know, another, and we kind of sort of taught, touched on this, you know, the design consideration is, not that we have a lot of alleys, but I definitely, if, if we were to have those, one or maybe even two, I think I'd prefer to see in the back. So you still have the smaller scale up, you know, towards the, the primary, you know, street avenue approach, so to speak. But again, we don't have a lot of alleys right now either. And to try and make those rear units accessible to, you know, to a ground floor garage wouldn't be extending the driveway. And so then you're eating up open space. So it's kind of a double-edged sword, no matter which way you try and do this.
Which is why I think we maybe don't need to limit the number of car, carriage houses quite so hard as long as they're able to meet certain relationships to the public space.
Okay, this is super helpful. Let's keep moving. Outdoor, open space, which we've been talking about all night. Our approach is also simplified here, so consistent with last time's discussion about only requiring open space for larger projects, the requirement now starts at 20 or more units. And at that point, they would need 10% of the lot area dedicated, or not dedicated, but given as common open space. Except stacks, none would be required. We're trying to incentivize more units on the lot. And then for detached courtyards or cottages, 20% of the lot area in HB 1110 is the definition of cottages. And so that would be required for courts.
Do I just carve up a big apartment lot into a bunch of tiny lots and then never have to provide any open space?
Your choice. You could. I think the incentive to make more lots out of a big lot, just to avoid 10% open space, might not be worth it. Because we're also, yeah, no, I guess we're not, so it has to be common, right? Can't just be private. So then the requirements for common open space, it has to be at least 15 feet wide, needs to be positioned in a more public place that can be shared. Be nice to be in direct sunlight, and then it has to be open to the sky, except 25% can be porches, gazebos, and things that help us in our wonderfully rainy climate. And then private open space, we're saying no dimension less than seven feet, so pretty small. And then directly accessible from the unit. And then balconies or porches, and I should say roof decks also count. And then in general, okay, so right in general, rooftop decks count. And then just saying you can landscape 35% of it, but the main point is that it's a space for people to gather. So mostly hard servicing, or hard surfacing and paths and things like that. I'm not sure that that's necessary to put a number on it. You want lawns to count.
I know, since I had just previously mentioned, you know, what the open space really looks like on those examples that we had, you know, like, as he said, 10% is not a lot. I mean, take what we can get, but one of the questions I do have is like, say, say we mandate, okay, definitely need to have exposure to the sun. So depending on how the street layout works and what works best, you know, it might be the south part of the building, makes the most sense to have that because of the south sun, et cetera. The, say, they don't have the whole block, and so they're only half of the block or block or whatever. The next adjacent development that could happen, again, kind of similar question about mandating continuing the alleys. Could, and that point, could we say, hey, next development that comes in, we want you to put that open space now on the north side of your development? So the two developments' open spaces are adjacent to each other, sort of, even though they're still technically each separate, they're not combined. From a visual, an open air point of view, they're taking advantage of each other and almost, you know, kind of doubling the effect. Is that, is that something that is possible, feasible? I, I know it's, might be asking too much.
Um, I think we might.
Okay.
But it's one thing to.
But it's one thing to say, hey, we're gonna acquire. Where we're mandated. And also, what if they want to do? Right, so no guarantee that.
Yeah. But hypothetical, say it's the same developer who's just phasing their projects. And so for legal reasons or finance reasons, it's really the same thing. They've separated it. At least having it somewhere saying. It would be great if you could. But. You know, we can't force you.
Yeah, I mean, we would always. Um, we do a lot of encouraging, whether or not. So but I mean, I think that um in all these developments. Um, just. Um, you know, I mean. Or but hopefully building enough. About a lot of. Um, or. Not like. That, but just like, hey, can we? A lot of.
I mean, in a perfect world, it would be more than 10% and it'd be central to the development. So everybody sort of has equal distance and access to it.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we want to put some language in there. Also, they talk about a lot of times you'll have a problem of this is. And there's fourth. There's usually language where. Find or unless it's, you know, unless you're allowing private open space or whatever, where your. Deck, porch is that type, but you just don't want.
And that's. And a lot of times what I would see on, you know, for the counties, unincorporated urban centers, the. The plans that would get submitted to that review board, it always seemed like they were putting the open space and. So, you know, the place that they couldn't develop or it was the leftovers. And I'm thinking of like developments that are right on 164th. And that's where they put the, nobody wants to have their open space on 164th. Now granted, we don't have road. Uh, the closest equivalent to that we have here is 220th, and that's not even getting to the level of 164th.
Right.
But. The point is, is that unless we, unless we really put some conditions on that, they're just going to stick it in the worst possible spot that nobody is going to want to use.
Yes, not all the time, but sometimes that's exactly what happens. Yeah. Okay, we can add some language there.
Um, I'm sorry. Curious where the numbers come from. Um, why 15 feet? Why seven feet? Why 10%?
15 feet just feels like a width of a space that you can gather with. I don't know, six other people or have a barbecue without being too big to not fit on a 60 foot site.
Roughly two of these tables? These are six.
Closer to three, like two and a half.
I have a really good pace if we want to do this later. Uh, then seven feet is. Is based on pushing a little bit on a five foot setback. Right? Just a little bit more than a typical setback. We've seen plenty of yards that people are happy to have in five year foot setback, but just a little bit more.
Okay. And um, I think that's like, you know, when I see a code like this and I see the numbers, I think those are always good things to put if maybe not in the code, then like in the errata or something that. When we're talking about design standards kind of helps inform like people. Um, so I would be interested to see the justification of that somewhere. Since, you know, I can see the numbers being challenged. Um, I think same with the uh, same with the uh, maybe 10% or 20% open. Um, I think the uh. Like, you know, for some of the larger sites that is oriented R3 and R4, I do have some concerns about, um, you know, suddenly we've. Created a condition where we don't necessarily need to include any open space. Um, maybe that's handled through like maximum building dimensions or spacing or something like that. Um, but if you are going to like, you know, replat a site in order to. Get around the dimensions, I think there should be. A procedure for that where you're still kind of meeting the basic intent, which is that. Like for the smaller lots, the assumption is you're providing public parks or something like that, or you're providing. Portions of the street that are closed off that are functioning is the public space. But for the larger site, you're um having to create that on the site. Um, because it's not something the city is able to provide with like a reasonable walking distance from each unit. So um, I think. Like that sort of rationale, like however that rationale is determined, like why it's 20 units and. Um, you know, where you start needing to provide open space, I think that would also be helpful to include when we're creating design guidelines.
Okay, this is maybe I'm misunderstanding our conversation last time because what I heard in a conversation about more units being bringing more housing. And more units being more feasible and bringing more housing. We, I heard specifically that we shouldn't require too much open space or open space until we got to a certain large number of units. So 20 is a number we had used elsewhere for guest park that you've used elsewhere for guest parking. So I took that 20 units as a Mount Lake Terrace standard for what a larger development means. You absolutely have control over that.
Okay. I like to see, I I personally like to see the numbers kind of align because I think then like you have sort of rationale, like this is a kind of a different unit than this one. And maybe, you know, at the edges, there is some gradation, but um, I think that makes like the law, it logically makes sense. Like if you're looking at a 20 unit development, it's. A different class than under 20. So I think that's a good justification, but like whatever that justification is, I think that helps when we're looking at standards like this.
Kristy, off the top of your head, do you know what the average? Units number is for the townhome developments that we've currently had over the last decade or so?
I don't know the average, but I would say um minimum's probably six. So I think the example is pretty spot on as far as. If you can do six, it pencils out and we've seen that. But the other developments have varied anywhere from. 25 to 50 kind of, um, but yeah, if you had kind of a single parcel. Six units every time.
So a lot of that's probably going to be dependent on whether or not the developer can acquire. More will land or in some cases like the entire block.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, you know, in some cases, people have basically just incrementally acquired. The lots, right? To get more than one lot to do a bigger development. But if you're seeing somebody has a lot, six units.
I'm trying to remember what HB 1110 says, and my memory is that they don't require any, but I'm not really sure. But we can also let you know that. Okay, this is great feedback and we're always willing to take more, but I think we should move on. Um, parking, this is the last slide in this chapter and I I really do want to get to design standards and hear some opinions because we haven't been over that yet. So parking requirements are also consistent with what you approved at the last meeting. So one stall per unit until you get to R4 and then it's point seven five. Um, and then the parking bonus for affordability in those zones, which reminder, it's 20% affordable units would go to point seven five in R3. And down to point five in R4. And then similarly with tree retention or. Um, connectivity. This is an older slide, so you still see the green stormwater over there. And then lots with more than 20 units, which is the threshold that we saw in the previous slide, one guest stall for every 20 units. And then there's also the driveway proposal, which is 12 feet of driveway per 50 feet of linear street frontage. So basically you get a pretty wide one way driveway to a typical 60 foot lot. And then you can do a double on a double lot and keep on going. And then drive aisle widths are 24 feet basically when you're backing out of your stalls.
I have a quick question. Does this align with the, I think the meeting minutes also had some proposed draft language for parking standards?
Oh. Oh, um, yes, we took, we, the amendments that we have in 125 aligns with this.
Okay, um, I had thoughts about that, but they exceed the scope of missing middle housing. Um, is that something we're talking about tonight?
Uh, yes, I mean, we don't have on here, which I have a note in here, which is the radius around the transit center. Is that what you're referring to?
Oh, I was seeing a bunch of language about like, you know, 12 units per thousand square feet for dining establishments that have. Like an entertainment component to it, um, which may have been from the old code. So I was curious.
Yeah, that's the old quote code. Yeah. So that's like for commercial and that type of stuff.
Okay, I had several questions about that that is answered by this.
Yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
This is kind of narrow for this part of the discussion.
I'm, I'm kind of curious on. The the one stall, one gas parking per 20 units is, is that sort of an industry standard now or kind of similar to Commissioner Betts' question previously, you know, about sort of the justification for the numbers? I'm just kind of curious. Like, to me, that seems kind of low. Um, uh, I'm just kind of curious about that number where it come from and I'm. Actually kind of curious what other planning committees about that. Cause I know the big comment that I always see, especially in any kind of new vote is like, what if I want people over? I can't.
Right, sure.
I can't have anybody over. So just, I'm just kind of.
So interesting enough, for townhome standards, there's no requirement for guest parking. Currently, and it only applies in the current RM zone, residential medium density, et cetera, where there's. Requirements for guest parking and they're pretty low. So this is kind of a change from that. And I would say for standards, these standards are kind of all over the board. Some people don't have any guest parking. Um, and then others require guest parking. It just depends on the jurisdiction. I mean, Heidi probably or Becky, but I, I don't think there is like a certain standard that everybody uses.
It's also pretty market dependent, right? Developers going to add some more if they can, or they feel like it's necessary. We can look into it more though.
Curious, what do other people feel about that number? Either off the top of your head or would like more info before blurring out an opinion?
Yeah, I guess it's relative to the street that it's on too. So to the extent that the street can support it, no need for any requirement. But. I also think that. If you had 40, 40 units and two guest stalls. That's still not enough, you know, so I would, I would say that um. I agree with the sentiment that it's probably not enough. Yeah, 20, 20 feels like a lot.
And I'm just thinking of um, kind of where I'm coming from is just like, we've seen whole blocks now on both sides become townhomes, you know, over the last decade. Either the same developer or maybe two developers have slowly bought out the entire. All the parcels, but they're under different developments. So when you look at it for each development, it doesn't seem like a lot at the time. But when you take it as a whole, a decade later in aggregate, then it's like. Oh, wow. So and I I know we're never going to be able to avoid every oh, wow situation, but. Seeing the, seeing what the trend has been and knowing that that's probably going to continue. Is that something that we should be mindful?
Okay, that's good, good feedback. Okay.
Um, I do have one other comment on the 12 foot per 50 feet of linear street frontage for driveways, which I think I mentioned last time. Um, like you are sort of prohibiting two car garages in single family homes unless they like pull into the side. And I think people are going to notice that. Maybe it's what we want, but I do think that's like something we should be aware of. And also, um, I know 50 feet, like, you know, our flat and like the older developments areas of town are closer to 60 feet, but. I almost wonder if that'd be better as a percentage because. Then you've got, you know, we were talking about maybe doing a lot with 40 feet, we're talking maybe 80 feet. Like um, the sort of big step change is just kind of sticks out in my head as something that seems like it could potentially be a little strange. Um, I know it's unitized because of cars and like, that's kind of what you need for the drive aisle. But um, I did want to point that out and I was curious what other people thought.
Um, at least for my thoughts, um, there is there is distinction between the driveway width and then versus the driveway width at the driveway apron where it meets the right of way. Cause I know that you can have the apron be that that 12 foot maximum lip or whatever it is, but as the driveway gets closer to. The the structure itself, it can widen out. I know. Some parcels in the city don't necessarily lend themselves to having a long driveway. Uh, for my street. There are long driveways. It's, it's, it's feasible. So I know it's not feasible in every situation, but. Some cases, so I'm just kind of curious, the 12 foot, that's just at the. The where, where the driveway meets the right of way, correct?
That's the intent, but it needs to be explicit in the code. So I'll, I'll note, I'll note that. It's your choice to allow a double car garage. I've heard in the past from you that you want to limit parker, you know, limit. The car dominance a little bit and have more walkability. So we're trying to. Kind of be somewhere in the middle, not prohibit garages, like Tacoma took the, you cannot have a front garage in Tacoma anymore. That was how they handled it. You have to park in the back, period. Unless you're down, unless you go down and there's some habitable space above it. So to allow one per 50 feet. This kind of middle ground, but you can also. Choose exceptions.
The trade off is that for some of the units lots with fewer units, um, you do wind up taking more of the space with cars because then you're moving the car on the site. Um, I don't know if I have an answer, but I think this is like a trade off that we will probably get asked questions about if people start digging into these numbers.
And I think one of the comments I made in a previous meeting too was wide curb cuts kill pedestrian activity. Literally and figuratively. Uh, so um, yeah. We can keep it as narrow as possible. That's great. But yeah, I do understand, you know, the, the. There is going to be those homeowners that have three, four vehicles and, you know, not all going to fit it in the garage. They're going to have to use their driveway for part of it. You're not going to be able to always park. Three vehicles in your driveway. The idea is that they're not going to have three vehicles anymore.
Or if you've got a house with an ADU and a DADU or duplexes with the DADU or whatever, like, you know, that does like limit flexibility and takes up more of the site with parking. Like kind of at that lower edge case. Where you start having to move a lot of cars around on the site, I think it makes sense. You start having to move fewer cars around on the site. It's like almost this perverse incentive. Where you want to take up all the street with cars, which is the wrong move. But I don't know, I think this specific regulation just sticks in my head as like a thing that. But I don't know, I think this specific regulation just sticks in my head as like a thing that people will complain about because you're now limiting like, you know, like you pretty much have to move, you spend all of your site moving the car. Like you pretty much have to move your car entirely on the site.
Anybody else comments?
What's the width necessary for a two car garage?
Um, a two car garage is typically 16 feet wide.
16 feet per 50 feet of.
Then you start getting more of the, like you're, you're, like you do wind up getting those garage houses too, which is why I don't have an answer. Like I think it's better from a design standpoint, but I also think it's worse from a design standpoint in some ways too. Cause then you have to spend more of the site moving the cars around.
It's 18 minimum in the city, nine for each car and depending, you know, doors and such. But yeah, so that, this gets back to, I mean, a couple of things we talked about, design standards and that. And then you have to have a radius, um, in addition to that driveway width typically, right? As you're kind of going out to the curb or lack of curb, whichever one it is, but usually there's a radius that you need. So there's that. And then there's, yeah, just how much parking. So for like ADUs, we can't require parking, right? So.
Okay.
I don't know if there's an answer to that.
Helped or hurt.
I think you can make a recommendation to increase it to 18 if you really want. We can also, we will, so what we're doing next is packaging up the draft standards for city council and then also doing a what we heard from the planning commission. And I don't know if you also write a letter or how that happens, but you can also make recommendations on that and have city council look at it. And then hear more from people. I would love to get to design standards. I think we've talked about these a lot. So residential design standards, this is again, the chapter that focuses on the look and feel of middle housing. It takes a lot of the, the look and feel out of chapter 30 and former 35 and puts it in here. It is organized by starting with things that are general to all of the housing types and all development in the middle housing zones, and then moves into housing type specific standards. So I'll start with general, move into housing type specific. Okay, let's do it. So the first one is building orientation and access. And it's the most important one, in my opinion. Essentially says that buildings must be oriented to an abutting street. It seems like something that's obvious. We've been doing it throughout history, but with slot homes, it has become tougher. So, um, we say that that's a requirement. And then if the unit doesn't have a street, it still needs to be oriented to an open space or mid block connection or improved parking court. And then all the units must be accessed via a connected path network essentially. And then it's supposed to orient to the street. So that means you shouldn't have things that are commonly associated with the rear of a building, like utilities and meters and things like that. We're using the term improved parking court for something a building can orient to. And that's essentially defined as something that a shared driveway or aisle with access to more than two garages or parking stalls that has a nicer, like maybe stamped concrete or unit pavers, has a little bit of landscaping, bushes or trees. And then the garages are set back a foot and a half from the unit entries. So there's just a little more articulation and we have not gotten a great picture of that yet, but we would in the code. Similar to that one is habitable spaces and or ground floor uses. So we touched on the concept last time. This, I think was the only one, design standard we really went over. But habitable space really is those living spaces that you see listed, like foyers and living rooms and dining rooms. And basically not garages, not mudrooms or laundry rooms or places where people aren't, you know, that you wouldn't want displayed to a street. So we're saying that you're required to have habitable space as 50% of your linear frontage of the building or at least 10 feet deep. So a reasonable room depth. You could debate if that's eight feet is acceptable, if 12 feet is needed, whatever, but we're setting it at 10 feet. We are allowing an exception for that ground floor habitable space to be five feet above sidewalk grade in order to slip a parking garage under it. That's very common in middle housing neighborhoods or more compact residential neighborhoods. And then the garage design itself, so different than the driveway standards, but garages less than 12 feet wide need to set back one and a half feet from their front facade. And then garages 12 feet or wider, set back two feet. And then we have some examples on the following pages, just about how we arrived at that 50% number. And I think last time you were aghast at the number a little bit. And so these are just, you know, the one on the upper left, 25% habitable space. It's just not enough. The one in the middle, upper middle, 28% habitable. The one on the right, 50%, although not a lot of openness. Um, and maybe kind of rough math there. The one on the lower left, 50% seems a little bit better. Maybe could have more windows on that lower percentage. 50% in the middle, then 50%, 57% on the lower right. And so question is, does that seem right? To be at 50%. And you know, we can also go over other elements and then come back to talk about everything. We've also got modulation coming up and does that make sense? Go through all of them at once? Okay, let's do it. I hear, see a lot of nodding heads. Okay. Facade elements, um, they basically, these standards basically say we want nice materials. So imitation materials like EFAS or fake brick can only be used if you provide a sample to the city and they approve it. So that's just trying to get at not having cheap materials. And then there, right now, so in the nineties, there started to be design standards that really talked about using lots of materials and modulations and ins and outs. And buildings have become very, pretty kind of frenetic. And so the idea is that you'd limit the number of principal materials on a facade to three. Three colors and three materials. You don't get to do everything, you like just a ton of things on a facade. And this is to keep it more in keeping with residential neighborhoods. Where you got often houses with one paint color, one trim color, maybe two colors, rather than having a bunch of them. Maybe controversial.
So no Victorian painted ladies?
Uh, we don't even see Victorian painted ladies in San Francisco anymore, like very, very few, right? They paint them like everybody else does, but yeah.
What about the mural house? Like we've been around long enough as a neighborhood where like, you know, people have like, you know, done creative things, you know? You could argue the aesthetic, um, merits of some of them, but like.
I tend to think on the same way a lot of times, you know, mural or what someone maybe would call like Spike House doing it. Painting something like that in, you know, tick somebody off, either a neighbor or the city. So, um, and apparently the cities haven't been able to stop it in the past. So would this now allow that to be stopped or does it become a first amendment?
Yeah, I've never ran into the Spiting House, but I can see it happening. I think, um, for me, when I, I look at some of this design stuff, I'm not a huge fan on you need three design elements or, um, you know, I agree with you. Like you don't need 40 pieces of jewelry. I just don't like it when it's all paint because it's like, paint's going to need to be repainted. To me, it waxes any type of substance. It's just like, and then we're going to do blue, white and taupe. That thing, I'm just kind of like, ah, who cares? Um, I just think it's so overused that it's just paint. At the end of the day, it's kind of just like a, a box. I don't know. I, I think it needs to be more substantial than just every, every design element is just paint. Cause I'm seeing a lot of that lately. And I'm just kind of like, that's not, to me, in my mind, that's not going to age well as we move forward.
I think of office space and how many pieces of flair.
Totally.
That's what just popped into my mind.
Yeah. Well, if you want to wear 17 pieces of flair on your house, like are we preventing that? Are we making the minimum 17 pieces of flair?
Let's, let's keep rolling. I love the flair. One of the landscape architect partners at our office always wears one item of flair, one pin every day, appropriate to the day. Okay, modulation is really related and I, it's a draft. I think there could be in some improvements in how we treat the facade materials and the modulation section. So we'll, I'll admit that right off the bat. But modulation is basically the massing moves. It's, it's the push and pull, the roofs, ins and outs and the mass of the building. Articulation really is the colors and the details and the materiality and how you, um, like how balconies look or the details of windows or just the, the more subtle architectural things. Okay, so we're setting standards for both of them and let's kind of read through them. So the first one is to break down overall mass into separate horizontal and vertical planes that reinforce the residential scale of the neighborhood. You can use a combination of the following techniques. I don't know why the word avoid is in there. Expressing individual units through shifting the facade. That's a classic one with townhouses or row houses in particular. Supporting, um, or, or maybe expressing building uses such as insetts to reflect entrances. Differentiating the vertical organization of the building, such as modulating the top of the building with an upper level setback that maybe you use for a roof terrace and then expressing roof forms. These are very simple concepts that kind of stand the test of time. Articulation is articulating building details and materials to create visual interest and human scaled elements on a facade. Achieved through a combination of the following, so identifying entries, repeating facade elements such as balconies or shading devices or stoops or window patterns. Like San Francisco example earlier, repetition of bay windows, repetition of stoops. Not a lot else.
Questions you had in the homework too, was asking.
Right, right. Subtle changes of materials, colors or patterns. Combining or emphasizing windows such as bays or inset or modulated openings. This is a very popular modern design technique where you have a couple of windows on a floor or one on this floor, one on that floor, either white windows, and then you paint a white panel between them, right? So like maybe articulating a, a set of windows together. One you don't see very often anymore because it's expensive to achieve with the building materials we use these days. Vinyl windows in particular is windows with a deep detailed frames. Just hard to do right now. If you use real brick, you get that referencing. Okay. So then the last one is referencing architectural elements from the neighborhood, such as roof slopes or other, or window detailing or local materials, that kind of thing. So those, that's the proposal. It's pretty different than what you've had. These are moving away from what I would call the nineties overly articulated, overly colored buildings, a lot of apartment buildings or townhouses like this. And then some examples that we're showing, and I think we could put in more historic examples too, because there are tons of good historic examples. But the upper left is articulating window patterns with a family of materials, you know, just a couple of materials and colors on that one. Emphasizing units and entries with roof lines at the top for those two units and then entry recessing a bit. Rhythm through the repetition of facade elements. And then this, the kind of middle bottom one is a, a multiplex. And that's defining the entry with a recess and then using bands at the floor lines. And then the one on the lower right is an example of what I think we're trying to get away of. Too many colors, too many forms that aren't expressing use or units or, or whatever. Um, I think some modulation is fine, but we're trying to get away from the chaos. I'm trying to remember what's on the next page. Let's just get through a couple. So these are all very related, right? This one is really similar to what you've had and it's basically saying, you need to have 25% of the front facade transparent or eight square feet at the street. But also if you can see it from the street, if it's 15 feet or wider, any structures seen from the street should also have some transparency. Then the second point to this is that when you're placing windows on facades, you know, at side lot lines or buildings on the same site that are close to each other, you should work at how to provide privacy. And so we're saying the, the last line there, facades within 10 feet of each other shouldn't overlap their fa, their windows that face each other by more than 50%. So in other words, 50% of the windows need to avoid each other at least. So a lot of times townhouse plans are mirrored and everybody's living room and looks at everybody's living room and every bedroom looks at a bedroom. We're saying you should vary that a bit. This one's a simple one. Basically units must have covered entries, porches or canopies or alcoves of a certain size. And then ad dressing has to be visible and units need to be navigable. This is super important as you have more units in the rear of the lot to have those addresses really clear. The fire department also likes that. The postman also likes that. And that is the general design standards proposal.
So I have two quick questions, um, try and be brief. One of them, when it comes to sort of, uh, articulation, modulation, when we're talking about the garage setbacks. I mean, for me, I don't think like a foot and a half and two feet is very much, but I'm just curious how other people think. So maybe that's a question we can circle back to. And then for the, the transparency requirement, the one we just talked about, at least eight square feet on the visible facade. Some facades can be really big or really, you know, a lot, eight square feet. It's like a little blip. Is that scale?
Yeah, just to be clear, it's 25% or at least eight feet, eight square feet.
So it can scale.
25% is your standard. You could go higher. It, I think we, we've seen 35% before. We've seen less.
How required are all of these? Like they seem, you know, pretty, like, you know, compared to like, you know, you have to push back three feet, you know, every 10 feet or whatever. How are we enforcing this out of curiosity? Like I, it seems pretty broad, right? Like, could it be, you know, like a six inch change of materials every floor? Could it be, um, you know, maybe it's not at that level of design yet?
I think you're pointing to a good point and I think we nailed it on a couple where we have a very clear standard, like the window transparency, like for 50% of the window. I think we haven't hit that quote, clear and objective design standard on some of them. And we need to get there, like, um, and especially in modulation. So express individual units through facade plane shifts of at least X.
Yeah.
Feet. Yeah, we can get there.
All right. And then everyone can like, and then everyone can build their, uh, buildings out of concrete blocks. And then it will reference materials from the neighborhood.
Yeah, I, as I was reading, like, okay, maybe we need to delete that one.
I do think some, I do think some of the blockers have like some, like interesting roof shapes. Like they put a little bit of thought into some of them, like they've got that mid century, like the, the roof kind of tilts. Like they put a little bit of thought into some of them, like they've got that mid-century, like the, the roof kind of tilts out like this. So I wouldn't say it's a total wash, but, um,
But we've also had a requirement for that, kind of where you're supposed to do that. And when people have wanted to do other things where we've had that requirement of mimicking the accessory dwelling unit with the primary unit and other things like that, we've gotten to a real pickle. So I would think about that.
Yeah, I think like, if these are like tightly written, like laws, I think it can start to get pretty, um, ornery, right? Like it's tough to deal, like you, you, you're basically limiting your design. And I think our current design basically assumes like, you know, there's the, the three kinds of Northwest styles, right? You've got, um, Space Age Wilderness Lodge, where it's like five kinds of like, you know, wood and steel. And then you've got clutter core, um, boxes, which is like what we're trying to move away from. And then you've got Fantastic Plastic Craftsman, where you're building the craftsman house, but it's like made of plastic. And we kind of like, we're assuming that residential development would meet Fantastic Plastic Craftsman, which is why we have that four to twelve slope, but then like it just makes other kinds, other styles of buildings look weird. So my preference is to kind of treat these a little bit more as guidelines, I think, as opposed to like hard and fast laws. Like maybe it's a palette that you pick from or something like that to sort of ensure that like, you know, especially with things like massing, I think that starts to get really problematic when you start having buildings that like take up the entire block or multiple blocks. And like you're trying to make it look like it's, you know, individual buildings on lots instead of, you know, just kind of a big box. So at the scale we're talking about, um, I'm wondering, you know, like, what scale are we requiring things like modulation? Is it a requirement or is it a guideline? Is it like a sheet you can pick from to sort of ensure that you're?
I think that's what we need to do. We need to remove the word avoid and may. We need to be more decisive in the requirements. And, um, we can give, you know, you need to do at least three of these elements or whatever. Not that you have to do everything, but, you know, kind of give a selection of things that you guys feel are important as far as these element, design elements. And then people can design around that, um, for a little bit more flexibility. But yet we're saying, here's the standard. Design's a little tricky, right? It's not black and white. So, but I think giving some options would be helpful, but still, yes, you have to do this. You just, it's not a, you can, if you want to, you know, thing.
So minimum of three pieces of flair.
Or whatever that number is.
Maximum of three pieces.
Minimum, maximum. It's a minimum and maximum standard.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's one more point. Like, walking around, I do kind of like, like, you know, we sort of, you know, rag on the concrete blocks or whatever. But I actually do appreciate like the effort that people have put into their houses. Like you see all kinds of like creative gardens and like they do interesting things. You've got the mural houses and like, so I don't necessarily wanna keep people from like doing that kind of thing. Like I think there is some value in being able to express yourself architecturally. So, um, I'm hesitant to make these two.
But a lot of that's come over time. These standards are gonna be when somebody's building something. I think people put their individual touch on something after the fact, right? Of how they kind of treat their home. So I don't think there's anything in here that would prohibit that necessarily. This is saying, hey, if you're gonna come in and you're gonna build something, these are kind of the standards that we want you to use.
Okay, so if they come in after the fact and paint their house highlighter yellow, so it's the one in the townhouse?
Had a code compliance issue on that thus far.
All right.
Yeah.
I just had a quick question. Um, the examples that are in this section on the modulation page and then the transparency page, are these all local examples or just kinda?
The, you mean, does, is the list generated from local examples?
No, I'm sorry, the, the photos themselves.
Oh, the examples. All Seattle, except I don't know about the upper right.
Okay. And the next page, is that, uh, the, on the transparency?
Seattle.
That's Seattle as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I ask partly because I think it kind of highlights, I looked like, well, I think I might know where that building is. But that's part of the problem is that they all look the same.
I had the self, yeah, we have more, I wanna put more historic, or not historic, but contemporary, you know, farmhouse, modern, that kind of stuff, right? Um, but yeah, they do all look similar.
That and I can't shut the work brain off. And so the transparency one, I'm seeing a couple of violations, so.
Transparency violations.
Not the transparency, but, uh, how, how what they built is interacting with where the property line probably is in the right way.
They also have a trash enclosure right at the front.
Yeah, that's.
They're very challenged with the lot, so we could. Uh, I know, we'll, we'll remove this example.
There's a two foot setback standard to the, the edge of the sidewalk and they're violating it.
It's a very cool modular project that was built very quickly, but you don't see that in the photo. Okay. Maybe we come back to the fifty percent? Some, you know, you can see that what you do in the fifty percent makes a difference. Some of these look better than this. Actually, I'm not sure this is fifty percent. Look, maybe it looks a little less.
I'll admit it, I'm torn. It's, it's, it's hard.
Should point out that all of these have more than twelve feet of driveway per fifty feet of lot frontage.
Especially this one.
So that might actually be the limiting factor here.
Yeah, this one you can see they have, uh, a strip in the middle that can be planted. Makes a big difference. This one too.
Yeah, which in that case, like, I don't have strong thoughts, cause I think these things will come together and, like we might even wind up with, you know, they take the house and they put the garage in front and then everyone just kind of curves in and parks in their garage. But, um, of the images you've shown, I do feel like fifty percent sort of feels about right.
I think fifty percent and larger looks fine. Under fifty percent looks a little sillier to me. Like the forty-three percent garages, fifty-seven percent habitable. Maybe I'm just used to larger garages or biased towards them, but I think they just look nicer to have more. That, that's why I would support fifty or larger, but.
Fifty or larger habitable?
No, the garage.
A garage.
Yeah.
That's funny.
From a, from an aesthetics point of view.
Cause, uh, I'm gonna tell you, I'm the, of all those pictures, the one that he thinks is, uh, not as, uh, is the one I like. I like to see more of the house and less of the garage.
I, I'm, I'm right there with you. I, I feel the same way, especially since I,
But it doesn't.
My house is the one house that designed on my street that has the narrow one car garage. Says the, what I call the one and a halves or even, even the two cars.
I think, yeah, in this example, it makes a big difference. The one on the, the bottom right, you know, the house is larger. So you could have a bigger garage. But when you look at the upper left, you go, wow, that's all garage.
It's all garage.
It's all garage. So just something that.
Missing is one of those.
I think we're just, we're doing minimums as well. So, you know.
Is this per building or is it per lot? And is it, uh, just the facades facing the street or is it other facades?
Just the building facade. So the driveways are dictated by the lot, right? And the garages or habitable spaces are dictated by building.
Does it complicate things more if it's a difference between whether it faces the street versus the side? It's not visible on the street?
Yeah, I think that makes a difference. If you're coming and, that's a best case scenario, right? You're coming in and then you're parking. And then if you're doing the proper treatment on the front, that's awesome. It's just when you're coming straight on to the facade of a building and it looks like a freaking garage and then you walk through a door. I mean, design wise? I mean, it's up to you guys, but I would just say the upper left, to me, says everything that you don't wanna have. It looks like a garage versus kind of a proper home on a street frontage to me.
And then adding that, you know, kind of the question that I brought up earlier too, is do, are people comfortable with a setback only being like a foot and a half? Doesn't seem like.
I think it depends on the facade, like what we define as facade modulation. Currently, we have a twenty foot setback for garages at the front, but a fifteen foot setback for the habitable space. So that's sort of implies a five foot distance. But I think it would, at the scale of an individual building, it would probably register, um, at fewer feet than five. That you're putting it back.
So the habitable space has to be ten feet deep. But that doesn't mean that the garage has to be behind that ten feet, right? It's just that you can't have like a little two foot deep habitable, habitable space and then go back into the garage or something. That's the
Right, right.
Idea there.
Right, but in our current code, we have the different setbacks between the garage and non-garage, which I think is like, it sort of implies a five foot.
Okay, okay, now I understand. Right, yeah.
Right, but that's really intended for single family. I mean, that's a code thing where it was, you know, residential and it was, you have a single family house and you're not anticipating this middle housing.
If I look at the lower middle yellow house or yellow duplex, I don't know that that's five feet of the porch sticking out, but then the porches stick out even farther beyond that. It's definitely more, the most prominent entry of anything we're seeing other than the upper middle, um, right hand entry. Right? So it's nice to have something. That upper right one may have two feet? Yeah, it could be bigger. It could go bigger than.
Well, it looks like the door is also setback from the garage. They're creating the, the, like, a little eyebrow that's maybe what, a foot or eighteen inches deep? And then the habitable space is actually set behind the garage. If you're not counting the porch as habitable space.
So do porches count would be the question.
Yeah.
Maybe. I think we're seeing nodding heads. Yes, seems reasonable. Okay. Okay. It's getting late. Are we losing steam? This is, yes, hot chocolate. Okay, why don't we just quickly go through the building or housing type standards? So these are the same housing types we talked about last time, singles, slots, rows, stacks and courts. They all need to follow the general, any building needs to follow the general standards we just went over and will revise. But they're all a little unique. And so the orange text basically tells you the same definition we read last time. Reminder, these buildings are, they contain one unit. They're detached from anything else. And they can be along streets or in backyards. They all have a private entry. Okay, so these are basically single family homes and daddoos or larger backyard buildings. We, you can see we're setting maximum width and depth on all the housing types. And this is to ensure that we're getting buildings that are at a scale compatible with single family neighborhoods, that they're middle housing scale. We don't have anything in the code up until this point that would set smaller scale buildings that are compatible with houses or small apartment buildings. We have lot coverage, we have height. And, but if you take, and setbacks, if you take a very large site, let's say in a big R4 site and you apply the tiny little setbacks on that massive site, you could, and it's maybe, let's say, two hundred feet long, you can build a hundred and ninety foot long building. That's not compatible similarly in the depth of the lot. And so we're setting a maximum width of fifty feet for singles and seventy-five feet depth. Some of these actual dimensions could be up for grabs. We set the fifty feet based on having five foot setbacks on both sides of a typical sixty foot lot. And then seventy-five feet, pretty deep actually. A lot of houses do not go that deep, but, you know, you could have one that does. Okay, and then, and then the, this may not be that unique, but the unique requirement for singles is that the primary elevation has to orient to the street. And in, including singles that are located in the rear yard on a corner lot, they have to also orient to the street. And then if they're located in rear yards, they can orient to the street, shared yard, mid-block connection, alley if present.
An ADU and a daddu are a kind of single. Is that the case?
A daddu is a single.
Okay.
Unless it's, yeah, I suppose it always is. Yeah, even if you have two, two ADUs or two small units attached to each other in the backyard, they're, I guess they're attached to each other, so they're no longer singles or daddos.
Mm-hmm.
Or ADUs.
Okay.
Maybe I'll go through all of these so you can see the, the differences and then, okay, so slots are, as you know, buildings with attached single or multi-story units, so they're, but they're usually townhouses aligned perpendicular to the street, configured side by side. Each dwelling has a private entry and a shared driveway is often included for parking or garage access. And slot, that is the slot that coined the term slot is that driveway. Examples include townhomes, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes and ADUs, but we see a lot of townhouses and we call them slots. We are saying that fifty foot width, similar to the, um, singles would be the maximum width and then ninety feet depth maximum. That's pretty deep, but it does allow for the minimum setbacks and, and for the rest of the building to take up that lot. The unique thing here is that a unit abutting a street has to orient to that street. And then additional units can orient to a pedestrian access path. You must emphasize an individual units somehow from that list of modulation. And then we're saying that there's an incentive to orient to the street. So front setbacks can be reduced by three feet if, if at least two units for fifty feet of frontage orient to the streets. So they become a little less slot-like because they're facing the street, but that's, I know that's something you've had a little success with getting.
Yeah, I would say in the examples that you have here, the lower right is a good example of really paying attention to facing that building to the front of the street. Whereas the other examples may have it, but it's, the effort seems kinda happening.
Agree. The upper left one particularly looks like a side of a building with some windows in it. We, we are looking for better examples. This has been an incredibly fast process, so we hope to continually upgrade some of these images.
No, but this is, it's good that there's, there's the contrast, so you can actually see kinda what we were talking about earlier. This is, this is it in practice.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Of course they are.
Yeah.
I recognize them.
Yeah, uh, they're all within a few blocks of each other. I think this is one of the examples where it's good to kind of, like, you know, you've got the, you've got, you referenced pedestrian access and you reference, um, like vehicular ass- access. Can they be the same? And I think this is like, you know, you start to build these slot units and they, um, And I think this is like, you know, you start to build these slot units and they um start to set up um, you know, pedestrian access that can then create those mid-block connections. I think um design standards for those things would be valuable here. Like the five foot setback, if you're orienting all of the buildings, like maybe does that become a little bit wider? And then it replicates and then maybe that's where the aspect ratio of the building that eventually is built to face it starts to set up that relationship where it's more like a street and less like some kind of back alley of some kind.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to get at with the improved part, parking court idea, which was kind of a late idea, but some of these courts have trees between the garage doors, which makes a huge difference. Some have just nicer paving. Sometimes there's an, sometimes there's an overhang that looks terrible. Sometimes there's an overhang that feels really nice. And then also when they vary the setbacks of the garages and the entries, it can make a, make a nicer space. So yeah, that's, that's good advice. That'd be good to have kind of a parking court design standards.
Yeah, and also pedestrian design standards. So it's not like you're, you know, walking down this weird alleyway to get to the units at the back.
Right. Yeah, it's a shared court.
Yeah.
It's not just for parking, right? Well, and there are some examples in my neighborhood where they've made an effort to separate pedestrians from cars. And it is the most vacant, desolate parking court you've ever seen. And then the side yards where they're accessing the units are cluttered with so much stuff. And if they had just put the effort into making one nice space, it would have worked and they just it, it just really fell apart.
Do you, just not to pry, do you know, was that the result of the builder or the result of the?
I think it was the builder.
Being constrained by the city's code?
I don't think that, well, the city doesn't say you have to have separate access because there are lots of examples of rows, which we're about to flip to, where those townhouses are accessed in the parking court. So it's not, it's not, I think it's a developer preference.
Okay, I was just curious. Cause a lot of times that's what, you know, we see the developers are trying to do the bare minimum or we have these ideas like, hey, this will be great, this will be awesome, this would really work. And then they go the exact opposite direction because it's what maximizes.
Yeah. I think we need more examples, photos in the code. We've, we've put in a few, but the intent is to have some more. Okay, three more housing types. This is the, kind of the opposite orientation of slots. So buildings with, again, attached, single or multi-story dwelling units, but aligned parallel to the street. The units are configured side by side and can be, this is the important, can be located abutting the street or in a backyard. We see those together a lot where you have a front row of row houses in the front and then another row in the back and they have a parking court in the middle. Every unit has their own entry and exactly like slots, the examples can be townhouses, duplexes, triplexes, daddos. I guess attached daddos, right? Um, we're setting an 80 foot width maximum. Maybe it could go to 90. It's basically set using like a hundred foot width with it's, it's kind of random, honestly. It's based on a gut feel of how many units go together. If they're 20 foot units and having at least four or 16 and having five.
I think scale really plays into it and how much, you know, how much linear feet do we want to see of a structure before there's a?
Yeah, in a break of a side yard.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the whole point. Corner lots can orient to the longest, need to orient to the longest street, which you're already seeing being done. You should emphasize individual units. And then we have an incentive here called the driveway reduction incentive. So putting a single driveway accessing a shared parking court for the front and the rear dwelling units is really encouraged and very typical. And so we're saying the habitable space requirements don't apply to the parking court frontages. It's just the street. And then you can reduce your front setback three feet to support that additional parking area. And so it's trying to incentivize hidden parking courts and more rows. Let's do two more. So stacks are buildings with attached dwelling units that stack on top of each other. We've talked about these a lot. These are the hardest ones to pencil. Um, they usually have a shared entry, but sometimes they have separate entries. And oftentimes they're mixed. So maybe the bottom ground floor units are accessed from, on their own, and then upper units are accessed through a shared entry. That's true of historic buildings, it's true of some modern buildings. Um, maximum, oh, so this could include, this is a laundry list of almost everything, right? So stacked flats, duplexes, fourplexes, sixplexes, multiplexes, small apartment buildings or condos. And so we're setting a width of, if it's less than six units, so kind of small sixplex territory, 75 feet wide, 95 feet deep, seven or more units, 90 feet wide with 100 feet deep. And then you really just need to emphasize the primary shared entrance. I think we should make it six or less.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Yeah. That's some last minute code writing happening. Yeah, thanks.
Sixteen minutes, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
Was it mentioned previously though, that in terms of the overall, all the different design options to choose from, that we're not seeing the stack flats being built because of either state policy or building code or a whole bunch of different reasons, but of the different options to choose from, we could say, oh, we love this, but it's just they're not building it. Am I remembering that correctly? Okay.
You want to take away the widths to incentivize them? Or, or make them more generous, maybe?
I'm just curious, because it was, it was, to me, I would think, oh, why, why haven't we seen? But apparently they don't want to do it. So I was curious, you know, that kind of stuck out to me when you guys mentioned that previously, because I would just assume, oh, they want to build everything.
Okay, there's one more and you know what it is, it's courts. We've talked about them a lot. So these are attached or detached. When they're called, when they're detached, they're cottages. Uh, arranged around a courtyard or a shared common open space on two or three sides. So they're either lined on two or three sides. This is coming right out of the state definition. Attached units can have a side by side and/or stacked configuration. So examples of courts include cottage housing or courtyard apartments. We're setting a depth here, or sorry, a width for each wing of the, that's fronting the street of 50 feet and then 120 feet depth total for the whole building, including the courtyard. Units along the street must have their primary facades oriented to the street and then everything else orients to the courtyard. And then units have to have that direct pedestrian access to the courtyard. And the courtyard has to connect to a sidewalk, I should say, public sidewalk. And then you emphasize primary shared entrances, that would be in the case of courtyard housing. Um, common open space needs to be contiguous and accessible to all the units. Serve as a gathering area with landscaping and amenities. And it shouldn't include or be divided by a driveway or a parking space. I think we need to add that to the common open space requirement. And then minimum of 20 feet in width here versus 15 feet in the general standards.
What, what was that last bit that you said that should be added to that section?
The can't include or be divided by a driveway or a parking space. Okay, that was it. Any last thoughts on housing type design standards?
More of a question. Um, so that, talking about courts, when you say it has to be oriented towards the street or the courtyard itself, what, we'll use the lower, uh, lower left as a good example. You know, the scale of that is, is fairly nice. They're all kind of orienting themselves towards the court. But say the backside of the houses on the right of that picture are actually the street. So in that case, would they have to front the street and then have the backside to the court? Or would there be a way saying, hey, when you design those two units, kind of make it so both the street side and the court side?
It's a good question.
They, they would look the same. They, I mean, at first glance, it would look like, oh, it fronts the court, but you walk around the side, the, the back and you realize, oh, but it fronts the street, you know? That you, there's a design element that you can throw in there. Now, the, the true functional nature of the house may be only on one side or the other, but when, from a visual point of view, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. It's, it's satisfying both of those conditions.
I can think of a lot of cottage examples that front both a street and a court, where, where individual buildings front a court and a street. And there's nothing in the orientation, like building orientation definition that says it has to be the living room and it has to have a picture window and it has to be this or that. It just says you have to have an entry, you have to have transparency, it can't look like the back of the building. So real, we are saying it, if it's fronting the street, it does need to look good at the street. Like that really matters, right? You want, you don't want the back of courtyard housing or um cottages looking bad on the street. And so we're prioritizing that, but we're also saying you have to have a direct pedestrian connection to the courtyard. And oftentimes they're going to make that look, and we could dictate that it had, it also cannot have the appearance of a rear.
I mean, for me, I, I prefer that because I know just development for the last 70 years really, I mean, they may put a half-hearted effort for having some interesting design on the front facade, but then they go all out cheap on the sides and on the back. And in this case where we are really trying to activate both, like for this courtyard example, both the street side and the courtyard side, I think it would be a disservice to let them get away with ignoring the backside of the house and letting, and, and not being sensitive to the design, how it inter, you know, interacts with, not only the street, but, but the court. Because I think when I, when I look at that lower left example, I mean, that short of the, you know, 30s and 40s bungalows that we keep referencing and, you know, that you see a lot in LA, this is like the closest thing that I've seen to it that maybe has a little bit more Northwest architectural style, which I'm kind of on the fence for, you know, about, but I it could, I mean, it could be done right, but it could go wrong, go south real quick, if we're not intentional. I don't know. That's just me and other people don't have an opinion on that.
Yeah, what, where I've seen them, it's been still a porch on the front street and then more stoops or decks on the courtyard. Just kind of makes sense.
But at least there's some thought into the design. And it's not just a, a flat facade.
Yeah.
Zero flair.
Right, yes. Two items of flair on courtyard facades. Okay, drop the mic on that. Okay, this has been really helpful. Um, you can see that the design standards are not as developed as the district standards because we've just started talking about them and thinking about them. So your feedback is really helpful. You can always send it via email too. We, we're open to any of those comments. These are also going to city council. Um, so there's lots of opportunity for people to give feedback and then we'll do another run. If Becky is still there, we have housing action plan. I know it's late, I don't know if you want to go through this, and then we have the next steps.
I am still here if you want to talk about the housing action plan, but um, the housing action plan is less time sensitive and we can continue to bring it back to you. Um, once we get through some of the code pieces, there's a lot of text on these slides. It's basically showing how which pieces of your housing element goals the code is picking up on and that the housing action plan can pick up on all of them, including the ones that aren't going to get addressed through the code. There are also places where if the code cannot adequately incentivize an outcome that you want, we can look to um other incentives and put some things into the housing action plan for you to consider other incentives to support those outcomes. Um, and I think that's, I, I would say the main time sensitive thing for you all to think about um, as we work through the code pieces is what are, what are the goals that you have that the code is the wrong tool to address or where the code is insufficient to get to the outcome that you're looking for? And those are the things that we can kind of put a pin in and come back to with the housing action plan.
Thank you, Becky.
Sounds like homework?
I will say that, you know, the way that Britt has laid out you guys, it'll be familiar to you guys because it's different format, but similar to what we were looking at when we were doing the comp plan update with the big spreadsheets and the code was kind of line by line and, you know, we've removed this, we've added this, this is where this gets inserted. It's kind of the same.
Okay, so maybe next steps? Real quick. Becky, are you doing next steps? Am I doing next steps? Go for it.
Sure, so these, um, these standards are out already for commerce reviews, you heard. Um, we come back again in just under a month. Um, and then um Sandra had mentioned it uh, early on, but we'll be doing some developer interviews and some additional focus groups um over the coming couple of weeks. And then starting to put together those housing action plan strategies as the kind of bulk of the code decisions get made and we get down into the finer details. That'll free us up to um start thinking about those housing action plan strategies and start framing that up in a little bit more detail for you. Anything that you want to add on that, Christy or Mathew and team?
I was just gonna add that we'll be going to city council just to give them an update on this, what you guys have been working on and kind of where we're at to get them ready when you guys hand it off. Um, that they're aware of kind of how we're progressing. And then what's intended for the housing action plan as well. So we'll be, just be giving them an update, very much like we did with the comp plan, just so they don't get it all at the last kind of minute. All right.
And I just want to do sort of one last round of if there was any sort of outstanding questions or comments. I know us here have kind of been able to do the comments, so I'm kind of directing this specifically to our online commissioners, trying not to uh ignore you guys. So I just wanted to make sure that we've kind of covered things that you guys are thinking about, if there's anything that you wanted to add.
There's nothing I want to add this time. I have some questions and things that I will be able to make sure I, I took some notes on and I'll be contributing um the email and the other venues we have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not hearing or seeing any uh of our online commissioners. I open that up to the people in person. If anybody have any other items or things that we might have missed or you've now have thoughts that you've had to think about it for the last few hours?
I just have a question, who's the focus group?
Um, working with the city manager and uh Affordable Housing Alliance, um in part to get their input and then just some local and regional develop, development community folks, just to give them a copy for their comment. Um, and the strategy behind that is just to um make the draft better, make our final product better. Are we, are we missing something from their perspective? And also just that we're trying to be inclusive, just like when we do workshops and all those things that we're not really bringing this product out to people to see. So they get it at the last minute and then it's the, you know, dive bomb. So we don't want to do that. We want to make sure that, you know, everybody has an opportunities to take a look at what we're doing here, so. Um, there has been some requests to get the code. We were working We were working Friday and so like the team said, you know, we have some work, additional work to do, but it was very important for us to start the 60-day review with an initial draft and then we can continue to improve it until it gets adopted. So we still have time to make changes and get your input. And if anybody has a question coming up, please reach out, you know? If you're like, hey, I forgot to ask this, a planning commissioner, I was reading this, please reach out. Yeah, absolutely.
And especially for newer commissioners, usually that's done, you can just email Shannon and she will forward it to?
Yep.
Kristy and/or the consultants.
Yep.
And then usually it's just a direct email to avoid sort of the revolving open meetings?
Right.
Stuff we don't want to get into, so.
Correct, yeah. No group discussion type stuff. I mean, we're okay on this, but it's just better that we kind of have the same channel and then we can make sure that your, your questions and such get to get in the right hands of people to assist you. So. Right?
All right. Sounds like we're good on this agenda item. Thank you very much, everyone. This is nothing, come on. Guys got to build up your endurance for these.
Yeah, please.
All right, so it looks like item number six, director's report.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief since it's past everybody's bedtime. Just wanted to tell folks who may have missed it that William Page Jr. was appointed to our city council to replace Rory Payne Donovan. So that seat was vacant maybe a couple of months. And I believe there were 14 interviews that were done by council to fill that position. And Mr. Page was selected. He's been very active. I see him everywhere. Everywhere. So that's the cool part. He's been very active for a number of years, basically doing everything. And so I think he'll come in pretty schooled on what's happening and is very involved with what's going on.
Is he coming from a current board or commission?
He was on Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, chaired that. I don't believe he was the chair currently, but chaired that for quite some time and was still a member. So a lot of the folks that applied, I don't know the percentage, but they are currently serving on other boards and commissions as well. So they threw their hat in the ring as well. And like our consultants relayed, we, we did, started 60-day review, which we throw these terms around and people are like, what the heck's that? But anytime we're working with code or anything that has to do with the Growth Management Act, comprehensive planning and all those things, that requires a state review by the Department of Commerce. And so that's what we say when we say 60, we started 60-day review because it's part of the procedural requirements that we do to make sure that we're in compliance with state law. And then we'll get comments back from them on different parts that they think can be improved or just some thoughts. And in commerce, there is a growth management division and folks, a lot of planner, planner types work there. So we do that as part of our procedures. And then we've also done the environmental review for the draft plan. So basically we're just getting all the steps put together to make sure, again, another opportunity for people to comment on what we're doing. So we're transparent and folks can take advantage of that. And then we'll also put the draft on the website as well and put a notice out for people if they're interested to have a look.
This is more of a procedural question on how the state operates. Say we make a couple of changes to this, it's already gone to them. When we send them the changes, does that start the clock over again and it's another 60 days? Or are they like, hey, we've already started your review. It might take us an extra day to review this change.
Yeah, no. So how it works is once we send the draft, that's the 60-day review, we'll also be required to send them the adopted standards. And that will start an appeal period. So the state can appeal. Any of the departments in the state can appeal as well. It doesn't happen often. There's a body called the Growth Hearings Board and so people can take the city to the Growth Hearings Board. Those types of things usually happen when you're?
Egregious.
Egregious, being neglectful, you know, you're not really trying to comply. And in some cases that happens or, you know, all of a sudden you kind of take a sharp turn. But I think that's never been the case for the city of, you know, we're trying to make sure that we're complying with the law. There's different ways to do that, but some things are very clear in what we need to do. And so we've always tried to do that. So I don't anticipate we'll have any problems. So should be good. Knock on. I don't know if this is really not wood, but anyways, and that's pretty much all I have. Like I said, I just encourage anybody, it's a lot coming at you in a little bit of time. I realize that we're going to have more coming at you, some more zoning code updates, the housing action plan, critical areas ordinance, et cetera. So plan your vacations wisely. We'll be busy the rest of the year.
And the, any of the commissioners have a question for the planning director? All right, not hearing or seeing any. So we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, miscellaneous business by call-up paneling commissioners. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Any future absences that they know of?
At the end of the week.
Not hearing or seeing any. I do have a quick scheduling question. The second week in May, do we know kind of what's on that agenda yet?
Oh, we do. We have a couple of things, you guys, that's a Tuesday because it's Memorial Day. We'll have both presentation on the updates to the critical areas ordinance and you will be seeing your zoning stuff on that date as well again. So I do know both of those items are on the agenda.
Okay, I, I need to double check my schedule. I have a conference?
Okay.
Sometime in May. I thought it was the weekend, the week that we were meeting, but second and fourth. Yeah, I think I got my weeks messed up, so.
Okay.
I was afraid that I might end up having to be remote that day.
Okay.
But maybe not.
Yeah, I believe the 27th might be the public hearing. The public hearing for at least the, the zoning portion of this, not for the housing because it has to go through a work session and public hearing with city council.
I may still end up having to be out of town.
Okay.
Because I might end up staying after the conference is over for?
Okay.
Have no idea yet. It's all very last minute, so.
Okay.
But I just wanted to put that out there. I will like 99% be able to attend remotely, no matter what the situation is.
Okay.
But obviously running a public hearing, wow.
Right.
I'm remote and everyone else is, it might be difficult. So I just try to plan ahead.
All right.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay, cool. Thank you. Go ahead and, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone.